We'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start with some recognitions and then we'll proceed with two proclamations and then we'll come back and kind of go into the consent agenda. I think the way we're going to do this, if we can have everyone from the Citizens Academy, please come up and just kind of stand beside Ron here. Just a couple of words about this. Manhattan is quite unique. Manhattan runs a Citizens Academy and this is one of the few places in the country where there's an opportunity for people to learn about their own civil government, their local affairs. We run six classes, three hours each, and these folks you see behind me are dedicated enough, enthusiastic enough, to know, want to know something about their city. So when you look at the future of the city and how people learn, this is tremendous for our future, to have people that are interested and really know something about how the city operates. So I'm going to call the names. Ron, if you'll hand out the certificates.
Raise your hand or step forward now if you can.
So Allison Hayward. Brittany Shank. I knew there could only be one JJ there. Carla Wilson, Wilcox, sorry. Lacey Brown. Neho. There she is. Patricia. Payne, yeah, we have two. And Patricia Slatterly. Teo. There he is. Vivian? Yep. We also had four others who weren't able to join us tonight but have equal appreciation for their participation in the, in the program. So if you'll please join me, let's have a round of applause for these great citizens. So we're going to do American Legion next, so Barry and Kirk and Harold, if you'd come up, and if there's anyone else, please come up and join us. We're going to recognize the American Legion. As many of you know, this is an organization that's been with us for some time. In fact, they're celebrating their 100th anniversary this year. This was actually begun in 1917 and completed in 1919, and they've always stood for helping the American servicemen and women. They established the G.I. Bill in 1944, sponsored American Legion Baseball, Girls and Boys Clubs, and Girls and Boys Nation, and has supported scholarships for many, many years. So when you're looking for a service organization, one that believes in the founding of this nation and the operations of our country in the appropriate way, this is, this is the one for you. So please publish the proclamation.
Whereas, the American Legion has been a staunch advocate for veterans and their families since 1919, and was founded on the four pillars of care for veterans, a strong national defense, Americanism, and children and youth. Whereas, the American Legion has played a leading role in initiatives and breakthroughs that have affected the lives of Americans in every community. Post-17 has fulfilled the Legion's mission since 1919 through programs such as Girl State, Boy State, Cadet Law, Veterans Day Parade, Memorial Day honoring deceased veterans, and Battle of the Bulge. Whereas, the American Legion is celebrating its centennial on July 20, 2019. Now therefore, Michael L. Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims July 20, 2019 as American Legion Centennial Day.
Do you want to say your words? Just a small amount, sir. Sir, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation and the city councilor. It's an honor for us to be recognized in, in this way, and just thank you all.
Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. Well, we're now going to help celebrate the National Day of the Cowboy. So Jonathan, Max, Jacob, and Cassidy, can you come up? The Cowboy is actually an emblem of the founding of the West. So when you think about hardships that were endured from the time this nation was founded, when we started pushing west, particularly across the Missouri River, onto the western shores, through the plains, that was the Cowboy. There's a lot of romance, a lot of legend associated with cowboys, but you know, when you got right down to it, it was really hard work. Most of us, when you go back a couple of generations, find that your, your mother and your father, your grandfather, your grandmother, in some way, were associated with ranching, farming, and cowboy activities. Many of the old songs that we enjoy today came from those cowboys, the ranch hands out there working on the range at night, lonely, and singing around the campfire. And those are the kinds of things that I remember about, about cowboys, but we're going to recognize you for the National Day of the Cowboy, and please read the proclamation.
Whereas, pioneering men and women, known as cowboys, helped establish America's frontiers, including the settlements in Kansas and Manhattan. Whereas, the Cowboy embodies honesty, integrity, courage, compassion, and determination, is an excellent steward of the land and its creatures, and cowboy traditions have long been part of the American landscape, and the legend of the Cowboy came to life on the Kansas Prairie during the era of the Great Cattle Drives. Whereas, the work of the modern Cowboy is honored by the Flint Hills Discovery Center, and a local celebration of the National Day of the Cowboy will be held in the Manhattan area during 2019. Now therefore, Michael L. Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims July 27, 2019 as the National Day of the Cowboy in Manhattan.
On behalf of the Flint Hills Discovery Center, thank you for proclaiming Saturday, the 27th, the National Day of the Cowboy. As the local representation of this national event, we are very pleased and excited to host it. Cowboys and cowgirls are central to the Flint Hills culture in Manhattan, and it's a very exciting day. I'd like to invite all of you to be there on Saturday from 10 to 5. We'll have wagon rides and all sorts of fun activities for children and adults all day. It's a special day, so please come celebrate with us. And these are representatives from the Kansas State University Rodeo Club, and I've asked if they'd like to say a word.
I'm Jake. My talking skills are pretty prolific, so I figured that if we had to do something like this, my teammates would probably give me the responsibility, and I took some time to think about what I wanted to share with you. And I'd just like to share with you a little fun fact about cowboys. See, in the 1880s, Cowboy was, was not a compliment, it was not a fun title, in fact, it was likely to get you punched in a bar. It was a pretty significant insult. Cowboys were dirty, they came from lower positions in society, a pretty significant amount of cowboys were African-American or Hispanic, and unfortunately, that wasn't something that was looked at as a positive at the time. So it wasn't, wasn't a pleasant thing to be called. Now, John Wayne movies and Marty Robbins songs did a lot to rehabilitate our image to the public, but for the second time in history, Cowboy is sometimes a bit of a bad word. I get frowned on when I wear my spurs into the Whole Foods, and there's some people that look at me with a little bit of contempt when I wear this hat, because the claims are that we don't treat animals right, or that ranching isn't great for the environment. And while I could cite studies that would argue that, I'd rather challenge people to spend a day with a rancher during calving season, and see how many calves end up on the cab of a pickup warming up, or talk to a rancher about the care he puts into his pasture. Cowboy might be a bad word, but I'll always be proud to be one because we care for our animals and we care for the land around us. So I wanted to thank you all for letting us be part of a city that understands that Cowboy isn't a bad word. It's about the best thing it can be called nowadays.
So now move to Commissioner's comments. So starting down with Linda.
I just, I would like to mention to the public that Tim Livesey, and many of you know him, who is a deputy garrison commander at Fort Riley, will be retiring at the end of this month, and so you have a few more weeks to wish him well in that retirement. That's a major, major kind of loss, institutional memory here in this region. I also want to mention the Riley County Fair, July 25th is a Thursday through the 29th on Monday, and on the nights of the 25th, 26th, and 27th is the Tall Valley Rodeo. And I'd just like to have you think about patronizing the fair, it might be, pick a cool night, but otherwise, go to the rodeo, do something different. It's probably been a lot of years since you, since you took all that in. And small-town fairs are just a very special place to be in the summer. You will enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
I just wanted to, you know, highlight and give some congratulations to those folks that finished the Citizens Academy. I think, you know, as the mayor said, that's a great program that we have here in the city. I went through it 2011 before I ran for city commission and learned a whole lot from the folks that were, that were here, and Gary always provided cookies, you know, every night, so it's worth, it's worth going to. And for those that have participated in it, you really should consider, you know, signing up for one of the many boards that the city has. There's 20-plus boards, and that's always a chore for the mayor, trying to recruit people for it. And so you've, you've looked at the program and seen it, and, and so take the time to go on the website and volunteer for the boards, because we need your participation. And for those of you listening that haven't participated in the Citizens Academy, I think the next one is, is in October, so sign up and Gary will take care of you, and I think he's still going to provide cookies.
Okay. I just want to say, there's a lot of people during this time that move in or out of Manhattan. Make sure you check your voter registration if you're moving in, or if you've changed your name, you got married, or a divorce, or you have anything in your life that has changed, just update it, because when it comes time to voting, it'll be too late, and you'll think you're registered, and you know where to, where to go and what to do, and it's very disappointing when you can't vote. And we have wonderful candidates running for our city commission, as well as our school board, not only within Manhattan but in the region, so I just wanted to let you know. Here's some time, make sure you look it up, at least on the Riley County Elections website, it's pretty easy to do. If you are not registered, I highly suggest you do get registered, and if you have a child that just turned 18, that'd be great to get him registered as well. Thank you.
We had a briefing last week from the INBAF Citizens Group, and one of the things that they've begun done, doing already is hiring. So the first 100 are well underway, the next 100 will be hired sometime next year. So I just ask you to be neighborly. If they move in, in your neighborhood, just like you do with any other neighbor, go down, say hello, and help them get acquainted with our great city. A lot of them are moving here just because they found it to be a great city in addition to having a good job, so appreciate you doing that. We still got a radio, or a call on the radio this morning about kind of when do I, when should I move back in, or when should I move my furniture again? Ron said it very well this morning, but you know, we're not, we're down to 11:27.8 or something right now, and we're still letting water out, but unfortunately, the water comes in about three or four times as fast as it goes out, so we still have to be a little bit cautious. If you've got special circumstances, you just kind of have to analyze that, but I think once we get into the August timeframe, we'll be in pretty decent shape given the forecast, so just have to bear with us a little bit longer on this, and I know a lot of people are disadvantaged by this, but I think it's a little bit better to be safe than sorry right now. And even though you look out your window and see blue sky and it's very hot, it might not be the same way in the top of the watershed where all the water comes from, so just be mindful of that. You might know now, if you look at the top end of the Midwest, up along the northern tier, a lot of rain's coming down, so people who you wouldn't expect down in Arkansas and so on as a result of the Mississippi River are really taking it right now. So just because it's not falling here doesn't mean it's not going to come into play for us. The other thing is on construction. As you all know, we've got a lot of projects going on. We were held up for quite a ways in the beginning, just because of weather, and the guys are out there working very hard. One of the things that we're finding is because there is so much push on construction now that it's been compressed in the timeframe, is that things are liable to cost us a little more than they might have. So we may have to stretch some of these things out, I just want you to be aware of that. We're trying to do the best we can as balancing the amount of money we're spending and the speed at which we can get things done. One of the goals always is to get things done by the time school starts, so that further compresses the time we have. A lot of the things that we're doing right now are catching up, but we may have a little bit of struggle right at when school starts again to get started properly, so. You have any further comments on that? What we'll do now is move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, as everybody knows, are these items that have been previously considered by the commission, or items that are administrative or housekeeping in nature. We do have one addition, slight modification to one of the items, so I'll ask Ron to highlight that, just because you may not have seen it when you got your mail out.
One of the things we followed up with bond counsel on late last week after the primary agenda had went out, that we put a revision out yesterday, deals with consent item M. We had originally had item four of that particular item to give us direction on whether or not we should issue some temporary notes to help in the financing for the hazard mitigation program with our stormwater fund. Bond counsel has since authorized us to move forward with temp note ordinance, if that's your desire, and so that takes two readings, so we would ask you to consider first reading of the home rule ordinance that will allow us to issue those bonds and temp notes for this hazard mitigation funding out of the stormwater fund.
Commissioner's comments on consent agenda, please.
Just that, I think it's important that we stand by Ultra Electronics. They've asked for an extension of their economic development and lot at the business park, and I really would like to work with them to make sure they stay here. And with regard to the buying out the flooded property, I am so pleased that our community is able to step up to buy these flooded properties, because that means that no one else will live in those residences and be flooded again. And so I feel like our community is taking responsibility, where, you know, it's kind of slow sometimes, feels slow, but on the other hand, when you consider we've done, we will have, this year with completion, we will have bought, purchased 12 lots, or 12 dwellings. So it's a, it's part of the solution for the flooding here in the community, that we have to do the best we can with the money we have.
So Ron, I'm fine with the consent agenda. Could you just explain a little bit about F for the annexation study with Green Valley?
Sure. Item F is a recommendation from the selection committee. There were two firms that submitted proposals to, in response for our request for proposals. This is to do an annexation study and analysis of the US 24 corridor of the Green Valley area, Blue Township, to look at the cost-benefit analysis and gathering a lot of data that will provide the commission with information to proceed. This is a, the recommendation is to enter negotiations with Tickler-Beis, they're a Bethesda, Maryland-based firm that has extensive experience in this type of work, and so if you concur with that selection, staff will be negotiating a detailed scope of services and bring that back for your consideration.
One of my questions about that was what, what's, you've mentioned in the materials that there'll be a phase two, and I'd like for the community to understand that this phase one will accomplish one, one set of criteria that we set up, and then there'll be a follow-up that will be necessary. So this isn't happening fast.
Right. This is a very detailed process of gathering as much data as we can, so the, this is going to be for, for phase one, to really look at a very broad area, but a number of different areas that, that really looks at the easily accessible data that can provide you with that analysis and that cost-benefit analysis. The phase two, if you chose to go into that phase two, would actually be a very detailed cost of services that follows our statute that requires us to do a five-year plan for proposing an annexation and the specific services that you'll provide to that area within that five years.
I'd also highlight item H, just because a lot is going on right now in this area, but this was one that is execution of the city-state agreement 3519 with the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for the city connecting link improvement program. This is for Fort Riley Boulevard improvements. This starts at Westwood Road and goes east to US 24 East, Point's Avenue. A lot of that, Rob, you may want to add, but a lot of that will probably be mill and overlay, and then there'll be some specific areas perhaps of reconstruction, but there's only, I think, $374,000 in there or something, so it won't be too extensive.
No, it's, it's intended to address deteriorated concrete panels from Westwood east to the mall entrance, so it's not a complete reconstruction like we have going on Kimball right now near Seth Child, Kenmore. So it's, it's more of a selected sections, and we're receiving 50% of the costs from KDOT through their connecting links.
Any comments? We need to go to the...
Oh, hold on.
So now we'll go to public comment, so if anyone has a comment on anything on the consent agenda, please come forward, love to hear from you. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment and come back to the commission and entertain a motion.
May I move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Gary would call the roll. Mayor Dodson? Yes. Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. We'll move to item six, which is the general agenda, and item A under that is to consider resolution to number 971615A, setting Tuesday, September 3, 2019, as a hearing date to determine whether the structure at 3003 Anderson Avenue is unsafe or dangerous, and Darren Emery, deputy building official, will be presenting. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. The property we're taking a look at this evening is 3003 Anderson Avenue. It is a commercial property that's at the southwest corner of the intersection of Anderson Avenue and Seth Child. It's a commercial structure that is part of what has for a long time been known as Village Plaza. That's a slightly closer view of the property. The structure that we're concerned with tonight is just the long north-south oriented structure, not the entire complex. On September 3, no, sorry, of last year, this area did experience some flooding due to quite a bit of rain overnight, and as you can see, the buildings took on flood water to almost the roof level. The eaves almost obtained water, and we measured about seven to eight feet inside the structures. Before I move on, I would like to point out that there are a number of buildings that did get water damage in this area. However, all of the other structures have been cleaned and returned to the condition prior to the flood, or in the one building north of the one we're speaking of this evening, it has been gutted, has been cleaned out, all of the drywall, all of the porous materials have been removed. So it has not been put back to pre-flood condition, but it is in shape where it has no contamination and no mold inside. This is a picture that was taken about a month after the flood damage, and to tell you the truth, it's about what it looks like today. The exterior of the structure has not been repaired to any degree. The exterior continues to deteriorate. I do find the property open. The doors are open when I went by earlier today, and I don't see that anything has happened negatively inside, but it does concern us that the structure is unsecured. This is a picture taken about two weeks after the flood, looking into one of the restaurants, and the building does remain in about this condition today. One of our major concerns is the fact that there were a number of food establishments in this property, and as the flood levels rose, it distributed the food throughout the building, and then as the flood levels left, the food remained, and to this date, as far as we can tell, it has not been cleaned. So as you might imagine, there's a lot of rot and decay inside the building. The smell is very strong, if the wind is right, you can notice it in other parts of this complex. Also, mold has begun to grow, up to about the seven-foot mark throughout the structure. Give you a little bit of overview of the property. It is a single-story wood-framed, multi-tenant, commercial structure. It was constructed in approximately 1984, and is approximately 39,000 square feet. It is currently vacant. Notice of code violations were sent to the owner of record of the property. Immediately after the flood, we did send a notice to repair or vacate, and also a notice to demo if that's desired. Deadlines have long since expired on those notices, and as far as we can tell, no significant corrective action has occurred.
I saw this in the packet, too. Quick question on this?
Yes.
I didn't hear this in the packet. Has the owner been in communication with the code offices at all, or has it, has it been radio silence, or?
Almost radio silence. We have hand-delivered these notices, because we are able to get in touch with owner that way. We have hand-delivered them, asked that he contact myself. I've issued many of these notices, I have not heard a word. I've not had any communication. Statutory procedure, the state statute does grant the governing... Statutory procedure, the state statute does grant the governing body the power to cause the repair or removal of a structure in which the city has determined has become unsafe or dangerous. That process is initiating with the, initiated when the building official files a report with the governing body. The initial report, or initial input on that report is not required at this time. Along with accepting the submission of that report, a resolution fixing the time and place for public hearing must be passed if you choose to decide to go forward with this process. Then if passed, the resolution is published once each week for two consecutive weeks, and the hearing date must be at least 30 days after the last publication. Also, a copy of the resolution must be mailed by certified mail within three days of the first publication to each owner, lien holder, and occupant. Considering tonight's action, we ask that you consider accepting submission of the building official's report and consider approving a resolution setting September 3, 2019, as a hearing date to determine whether the property 3003 Anderson is unsafe or dangerous. The governing body is not making a finding or reaching a determination this evening. That would happen at the public hearing. And at the public hearing, more evidence would be presented by the building official, giving you more details about the condition of the structure, and there would be an opportunity for the owner, lien holder, or occupant to present information at that time as well. Then the governing body would make a finding by resolution at that time. Now, of course, we should discuss costs. If the city does remove the structure, by statute, such costs are initially paid by the city through the General Fund. Then the city must send a statement to the owner within 30 days requesting that payment. If the cost is not paid within 30 days, it may be assessed on the property and then collected as a special assessment. This is not the first time we've gone through this process. You'll see here a list of a number of properties we've done this process previously. Most recently, Assistant Chief Clausen was here last year discussing 719 Bluemont with him. Now, that was a very brief overview of the process and the property. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I wanted to ask about the hand-delivery process. Do you, like, does that mean you went to the mailing address and put it in the post office box? Does that mean you handed it to the owner?
We actually handed it directly to the owner.
Handed it to?
We sent the notices by certified mail, which is required.
Right.
And we went to his home and handed it to him.
Okay, so hand-deliver means put it in the hand of the owner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If the, if the Commission does, at the public hearing, make the finding that the structure should be condemned and tore down, is that in an area that we would allow a structure to be rebuilt?
That is a great question. We have addressed that with our Flood Plane Administrator, Chad Bungier. My understanding is some significant changes would need to be made to comply with regulations, but he may wish to speak into that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my own...
If you'd like more information about that.
Well, part of what the, I mean, we did do this with Bluemont, but it's somewhat of a different case, right? Because an owner could rebuild something, right? There, so do we have to treat this process any differently, knowing that there would be a significant cost for anybody to try to rebuild there?
Yeah. Hi, Chad Bungier, Assistant Director of Community Development. Since we're condemning the land and not purchasing it for open space and that kind of stuff, it could be rebuilt upon. It is in the 1% chance flood plane, and so our flood plane regulations will apply there. Being its own commercial, it has two methods to protect it against the flooding. Either fill, to raise that lowest enclosed floor, so slab-on-grade, the top of that concrete above the flood elevation, or because it's non-residential, it can be floodproof. So there are ways that they could seal the building, seal the entryways to floodproof it, but it would have to be floodproofed above that elevation for that area. So it could be rebuilt there. It would take some doing in terms of fill or, or design, but it certainly could be built upon.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
So I think this, this particular owner, property owner, has a history in that area, mostly negative, but that area is also very flood-prone, like we just discussed. So is the intent of the property owner not taking no steps in responding to us, thinking that if we take care of it as far as demolishing and that cost, that probably he's not going to be losing anything anyway? Because how do we actually get that? Because that area might not be able to be sold.
That's a good point, and, and to be honest, those are the questions that I had hoped he would come visit with me about, because I have no idea what his intentions or plans are at this point. Those are the questions I would have really appreciated to have an opportunity to speak with him about.
So how would we get that money from him or that area? I don't, I don't know, because he may be thinking, this is a great deal, they'll just take care of it for me, I don't have to lift a finger.
And if we do go through this process and pay for the demolition and cleaning up of the property, we, my, my guess is that we would end up assessing this as tax to the property.
Okay. I just don't want to promote bad behavior in this case, because that's coming out of our General Fund, and I want to make sure that we get a response of some kind, at least in, in this instance. I don't want other property owners to think in the same method, or the process that this property owner is thinking, if that made any sense.
So this would show up on his, when you just say special assessments?
Yep.
We're saying it will be moved to his property taxes.
Correct.
At the county.
Correct.
And he'll, that he'll have to pay. I guess my question is, what if he doesn't pay them?
Yeah, that was the question, too.
I was about to speak to that.
Are his taxes up today?
Thank you. In addition to the assessment, the special assessment on the property taxes, the city can file a debt action in District Court against the owner to recover it that way, if the property is, if it's not recovered through taxes.
Okay. Because I don't want to just be kind. I don't want the city absorbing this cost. I want to be sure we can recover it.
Okay.
But, you know, to put another spin on it, I mean, we don't have a program to buy out commercial properties. We talked about that at our coordination meeting, and so, you know, if you're the owner of this and it got flooded, and it probably has little market value, you don't have a lot of options. And, and, you know, as far as I can tell, it may eventually wind up on a tax sale, and we may get nothing out of it. But the $150,000 it may cost us to demolish it is much less than what we paid for residential properties that got flooded that we bought out, and that's just another way of looking at it. The businesses have no safety net, at least the residential properties do. And so, you know, to put thousands of dollars into rebuilding this when it's not going to be protected from another flood, I can see why perhaps the, the owner didn't respond. Okay, well, thanks very much. Just hold on a minute, just in case. So is there anyone in, who would like to make public comment on this issue at this All right, seeing none, we'll come back to the Commission if there's further comment. Otherwise, we can entertain a motion. I wandered around that building the other day, and, and we definitely need to do something about it, because you probably need a gas mask if you're going to walk around to it too close. So, so I'm convinced that, yeah, we need to have the hearing and see if we can get down to the nuts and bolts on what to do.
It is a year, next, Labor Day will be one year since the, the flood that we had on Wildcat Creek, and so it's a health hazard as far as, and a hazard for our whole community. Having said that, unless there are other comments, I would move that we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You should say, I just don't want, I just want to make sure that this, we follow this carefully, because even if it is $150,000 and there isn't someplace for commercial property to go in a flood situation, and I want to make sure we're not promoting bad behavior by even responding or being able to communicate, because this is taxpayer money that we're using for this, and some of those areas get a lot of flooding, and I, I don't want it to be okay to, to go through this. So I want us to keep close tabs on how to do this, how we're doing it with the public hearing, and still continue to press the property owner to come to the table to have that discussion.
I agree. Commissioner Ready, I think it's in, even if we don't have a buyout process for commercial properties, the city can't work with you if you refuse to talk to the city. So I would hope that the owner steps forward during this public hearing process and brings a voice to the table, but if you, the silence is the continued method, and this is our only way forward, so.
And Wildcat Creek continues to be a problem, so, and it will become an ever greater problem as time goes on, probably, given. With that, I would make a motion to accept the submission of the building official's written report for 3003 Anderson Avenue and approve resolution number 071619-A, setting Tuesday, September 3, as a hearing date to determine whether the structure at 3003 Anderson Avenue is unsafe or dangerous.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We'll now move to item B, which is a contract award for Expedition Asia Exhibit Construction Services for our zoo. Presenters will be Wyatt Thompson and Scott going to join you in a minute, or?
Scott will be here for questions and things to talk about animals if we need that.
Wyatt Thompson, Assistant Director of Parks and Rec.
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. We're here to talk about Expedition Asia, which is a frequent new project at Sunset Zoo, a major renovation that could occur there, and so as an overview, we'll provide some background and a little history on that project to bring you up to speed with where we are today, the bidding process and the outcomes of that bid process, and then some alternatives for how we might proceed with the project. So just as a, a bit of a background reminder, the Expedition Asia project involves three new animal exhibits in the heart of Sunset Zoo. It would provide new holding buildings and enclosures for the Malayan Tiger, Sloth Bear, and Amir Leopard, all of which are highly endangered species. It would provide, this is the Tiger, Sloth Bear, and Leopard Yard. It would also provide an ADA accessible walkway from the main part of, level of the zoo down to the lower levels, which is currently not ADA accessible. It would provide a viewing deck to view the animal yards, as well as a large covered overlook pavilion, which is intended to be a rentable space for events or community use in, in the heart of the zoo as well. So this project started back in 2013. The city and zoo staff identified that there were some deficiencies with some of the existing animal exhibits. They no longer met current standards set forth by the, by the, by the AZA, which accredits zoos throughout the country. And, and in 2014, in that process, the AZA also identified and brought notice to the, to the zoo staff that there were some issues with those exhibits. Following that, a donor from the community pledged $500,000 towards the design and construction of new exhibits, which would become Expedition Asia. And then in 2015, you, this body authorized GLMV Architecture to begin that design, and for the next couple of years, we worked through that design process as well as fundraising for that exhibit. And I'll just point out that the Sunset Zoological Trust raised over $1.9 million through philanthropy and pledges, donations, grants for, for this project, and so they did an excellent job bringing those resources to the table to make this project possible. In October of 2018, this Commission authorized a qualification-based selection process to hire a contractor, and the, the reason for that special process was to ensure that we had a contractor that was familiar with the construction of zoological exhibits. There's unique challenges and considerations when constructing buildings and enclosures for live wild animals and the, the interaction with staff, as well as the public that they would have there, and so we wanted to ensure that our contractor had some knowledge and experience dealing with those type of issues. So following that authorization, we finalized that design and permitting process with GLMV and issued that request for qualifications. We had four firms respond to that request. All four indicated their experience with zoo construction and exhibits, and so they were all four invited to participate in that next phase, where we asked for price proposals and conducted interviews of those firms. So on June 26, we interviewed those firms. Commissioner McKee was gracious enough to spend the day with us discussing those qualifications, and then we opened bids that afternoon. The bid documents, in terms of how the project was broken out, we had a base bid and two alternates. The base bid comprised of the Tiger and Sloth Bear exhibit areas, the ADA walkway down to the lower level, and the viewing deck that would let you view into those two exhibit yards. Alternate one was for the Leopard exhibit and the overlook pavilion, and this was really almost a function of fundraising, more than it was constructibility, and we'll talk about that in a second, but we did break it out for, for pricing purposes. And then alternate two was to bury some overhead power lines as they come into the exhibit area. So we took, well, we did interviews, and then we, all of the committee members ranked those qualifications of those contractors based on the, the information that they provided, and you'll see those qualifications rankings here. We ranked the four firms, one through four, with one being the most qualified in the opinion of the committee. And then we opened bids, and as you can see, the architect's estimate for this project was approximately $3.2 million, and the, we received a couple incomplete bids. They didn't bid on the entire project, so the apparent low bidder through that process was KBS Constructors, which was also the number-one ranked qualified bidder at a bid amount of just under $4.8 million.
Wyatt, when you say incomplete bids, do you mean they didn't bid on one of the alternatives, or they didn't, I know, I think it was Site Utilities, a lot of them were having trouble getting bids on, or would that be considered an incomplete bid as well?
Yes, two, the two that we list here as providing incomplete bids wrote on their bid form, bid does not include Site Utilities, as an example. One of the bids also did not include the caging, the cage work on the inside of the buildings that separate the animals from each other and from the people, and so they, they excluded those from their price.
And correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm not sure this matters, but KBS, their Site Utilities portion was an estimate, wasn't it? It wasn't actually a hard bid from a subcontractor? Because I feel like we got the same exact story from all four, all four of them, so I don't feel like we were provided hard numbers by anybody.
KBS did not provide an exclusion on their bid.
Okay.
Now, how contractors determine how to price things in their bid is really up to them. They provided a, a bid for the full project, so, not...
Okay.
And I will say that Joel Chris and Steve Spade from KBS Constructors are here tonight if, if there are specific questions for them, but based upon our review, KBS provided a qualified bid.
Okay.
So this is kind of a breakdown of that, of their bid, $4.8 million. We would anticipate about $100,000 in additional costs, soft costs, that would entail things like construction administration inspections that would need to occur during that construction process, bringing our total project estimate to around $4.9 million. Our budget was $4 million. We received $1.9 million in donations that I spoke of, as well as there's approximately $2.1 million remaining in excess sales tax funds from the previous quality-of-life sales tax that this Commission in 2017 had indicated could be directed to the Expedition Asia project. So we have a shortfall or a gap of about $874,000 to bring the project as envisioned to completeness.
Wyatt, how is it that our architect's estimate is so low compared to these bids that are $2 million more?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a huge jump.
It is. That, that was a frustrating moment when we heard all of these.
Okay.
The, the architect had indicated that, you know, that, that was their best estimate, approximation of what they anticipated that cost would be. Obviously, there are local factors.
Yeah.
At play. We've seen higher bids on a number, on a number of projects recently, primarily due to, you know, we had a long winter, subcontractors are backed up with work, and so we think that that may have had an impact on that price. Commissioner McKee referenced the inability of some contractors to find utility subcontractors, and I do think that, that that was the case. Some, some of those underground contractors simply weren't bidding or providing prices that were maybe higher than we would normally anticipate. There's also, you know, some specialty materials in this project that were maybe unfamiliar to some of the subcontractors, and so those are some opportunities, we think, where we can have some conversations with those subs and find out what, what caused their prices to go up. And then the third reason for that cost of escalation may have been rock, concerns about finding rock at the zoo. We know there's rock there, there's rock all, all over town, but that may have had an undue kind of influence on that excavation cost as well. Does that answer your questions, Commissioner? Thank you. So, so we have, we have a gap. We provided a number of alternatives in the memo to you. The first and the, and the recommended alternative would be to... The first and the recommended alternative would be to reject all the bids and to end that special process of that qualification-based selection and then authorize a new process for staff to negotiate and award a future construction contract with KBS pending your review and approval at a future meeting. So we would ask for permission to negotiate and value engineer that project, identify those areas where cost savings could be found, and try to bring back a project that is less lower cost than what we have at the current time. Alternatively, you could reject all the bids and instruct staff to repeat the selection process again in the future. You could reject all bids and instruct staff to rebid that project using a different process and different from the qualification-based process that we used this time. You could accept the bid from KBS for the base bid only. We do have sufficient funds to build the base project that they have bid on. I will say that after talking with our architect, they have concerns about constructing the bid alternate, the Leopard exhibit and the overlook pavilion after this Tiger and Sloth Bear portions of the project are built. And so in terms of construction access, we kind of box ourselves out of some of those areas, which could, if we come back in the future for that Leopard exhibit, make that construction process more difficult. You could also accept the KBS bid for the entire project and give us some direction on how we can make up that funding gap. You could also come up with another idea to give us or table the item. Although I will say that we are nearing the end of our 30-day period where we can require that contractor to hold their bids. So after that, it would be up to them to decide whether or not they would honor those prices.
What is the actual cost of Alt Two, which is moving the electrical lines?
KBS actually did not provide a bid for that alternate.
So that's not something that we're talking about?
That is not something that we would consider. That's an option that we would have, if we had the funds to do it, we think it's a good idea. It cleans up that area of the zoo. But they chose not to provide that price, and it's not an essential aspect of the project.
And we don't have the money?
And we're short on funds as it is anyway, so.
And what is the value of Alt One? The alternative one, which is the Leopard and overlook pavilion?
Their price was approximately $1.2 million.
Yep, okay, good.
So the alternative that staff would recommend is that first alternative to reject all the bids and authorize a process to negotiate with KBS to value engineer that project and identify those cost savings and then return to you at a future time with an amended form of that contract. We do think there's potential for some cost savings, either through the change of materials, slight change in the scope. We would hope to complete all three exhibits and for all three animals. We would have to work through that process to see if that's possible and if we can cut the $874,000 necessary to get to that point. It may be that we can provide significant savings, but we may not be able to complete all of that gap. And so I guess as a part of tonight's discussion, in addition to this authorization, we would be open to hearing some comments on if there is interest in providing additional funding from some other sources. Certainly, one of those sources could be asking that the trust and the Friends of Sunset Zoo seek more philanthropic donations to fill that gap. We could talk about bond and interest type of a funding source, which would have a property tax implication to it, or conversation about adding this project to the .3 sales tax, we think could be a possible viable option if you wanted to include that in the November election. So there are some revenue options if you wanted to entertain those. Certainly, we think there's a way to reduce some cost to bring the project closer to that and possibly within that budget based on the current funds that we have available. This is a copy of the motion that's in your packet, essentially to reject all the bids, start a new process that allows us to go through that negotiation process, and then, as I said, bring back that contract for your consideration at a future meeting. So with that, I'm open for questions. As I said, Scott Shoemaker is here, as well as representatives from KBS.
So I have some more, I have some questions, more questions about the site utilities.
Yes.
So per our, how much of, since EB or some of the other ones didn't offer a hard estimate on site utilities, were they just immediately disregarded? Or like, what kind of a negative impact did that have on the point system? I just bring that up because I didn't feel like KBS, yeah, they put a number in, but I didn't feel like that they were confident in that number by any means. When I left that room that day, I felt like nobody knew really how much site utilities was going to cost.
And that may be true, that they don't really know. But KBS and one of the other bidders did provide a number. And I think that you'll find that, I would say that happens often. What's unique about this is that we had an interview where we could ask those questions. On a normal public bid process, we don't actually have that opportunity. All we see is the number. And then the contractor is working with their subs to figure out how they're piecing all those numbers together if they're awarded the project.
What happens if that cost comes back significantly more than what they had given us in an estimate?
If the scope of work hasn't changed, then that's not our responsibility.
So they cover that cost?
Yes, they would have to cover that cost.
So if I approve, if we move forward with this and they were way off in their estimate in site utilities, that's on them if the scope of work doesn't change?
As would any aspect of the job. If they underestimated any aspect, that would be on them unless the scope of work changed.
Okay, that's just, I don't, I guess I don't know what I don't know. I guess the RFP processes that I'm involved in, it's not uncommon for us to, you know, in the industry I work in, to give a bid and say, well, there's this one request that you have, we're going to need like a lot more information before we can give you a price on that. And so I just want to make sure that we didn't throw out other bidders' estimates just because of that, because it kind of seemed like something they were all struggling with. But I think your answer is clarified for me.
Our contract documents do allow us to reject incomplete bids. And that is spelled out pretty clearly in our contract that was provided as part of that. It's provided as part of every bid process, and so I don't.
And I think that's fine. It's just three of them were incomplete and one of them, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't just a number that they threw in so they'd have a complete bid, and then we might have to come back and pay more. But if they're going to cover the cost, then, I mean, don't change the scope of work, Wyatt, but.
But it's not uncommon for a contractor, for us to have to, for them to come back two, three times to ask for more money, more money, because something is, requires more money than was planned. I forgot what we call that, overrun or?
Change order.
Change orders.
Usually that involves a change of scope that either we recognize or it sometimes is on an as-built basis, and it was bid as-built. So, you know, we try hard not to have change orders or we do a project and we find something during the construction phase that you just got to deal with. So usually they're unusual circumstances unless there is a full agreement that there's an opportunity for betterment.
I was really pleased that together we had $4 million and that we're now talking about another $2 million from the Friends of the Zoo. Or, you know, we've, we used the remainder or leftover of our sales tax.
Can you put that slide back up, Wyatt?
Last sales tax that was sunsetted. I'm interested in trying to stay closer to, this is more than I would like to see, financial, more money. And I don't know if, what you think, what do you think you can accomplish how much of a reduction by the negotiation process that you're talking about? Can you come closer to the original expectation? Or is it still going to be, well, I know you don't know, but?
I think getting the project from $4.8 million down to $3.2 million that the architect thought is unrealistic.
I agree, but we're at four.
Getting to within the $4 million that we have available in funds is maybe possible. We won't know that until we start that process. And so that's really what the request tonight is about, is can we engage with KBS to allow us to have those conversations and see where we can get, if we can trim $900,000 or $500,000 and then bring back to you for consideration either a contract that meets that financial expectation or doesn't. And you can, you would have at that time the opportunity to accept or reject that contract for that specific amount.
The three bidders were within $27,000 of each other. I'm not willing, I don't want to use any of the three tenths sales tax on this ballot for the fall. I don't want to load it up with any more things than what we had on our initial agenda. So I, well, I guess I, we could proceed to try to bring the amount down. I mean, that's what you're asking. And, but I'm not interested in going so far over what the expectation was. Certainly, when we committed the sales tax money. Anyway, that's what I think about it.
Yeah, I think the proposed motion, I feel comfortable with. But, you know, when I look at the Special Parks and Recreation Fund and the dedicated funds that we've already committed to, such as the Lettstone Park Grading, Schultz Park, Peace Memorial Auditorium. So there are some things that are already been dedicated to. And I think it's best to go back and reevaluate some of these things because we haven't considered the, at least I haven't had a larger discussion about operations. And, you know, we often talk about the Flint Hills Discovery Center and how much we have to pay for them all the time. But I think the zoo isn't along the same lines. And this is a unique facility. And I don't know what it requires as far as staffing or utilities or what is, because it is so unique, it might require different type of training. So I want us to be rethinking about the dedicated money for this. I think you're asking, is it $750,000 or $800,000 that it's over, right, the shortfall?
Yes, yes, from the bid.
Did I say something wrong?
No, these are construction costs for.
Right, this is construction. But oftentimes, after the construction, we also have to pay for staffing and taking care of the facility.
Yeah, so, and Scott may, wherever you are, may want to speak to this. But I think, I believe it's envisioned that we can take care of these animals with the staff that we have and.
Correct, we don't envision any additional staff for these three new exhibits. Utility costs, I can't speak to. I just don't know. Obviously, there are a lot more buildings than we currently have. But staffing, we don't anticipate needing any more staff.
Right.
We currently have two of these species on hand right now. They're just in exhibits that aren't, as they say, meeting modern zoological standards.
You came up for a reason.
Yeah, I did. I wanted to make a comment about the .3 before we get too far down the road. This project's one of the unique ones where we have a lot of cash on hand. The zoo is also a very popular destination in this community. The .3, in my opinion, could be helped by adding it. It's also a project that will literally in three months generate the amount of revenue we need to finish. If it's, if the .3 passes in April, June collections will start. By September, we'll have enough revenue to make this gap. And you won't have to debt finance this. You got enough cash on hand to go ahead and pay for the project, and we'll save interest costs over time. It's an opportunity, in my mind, to leverage the support for the zoo and the .3 sales tax. And the outcome is virtually three months of revenue. Three months of revenue that, in the grand scheme of that 30-year debt service plan that we talked about, is minimal. I just wanted to make sure you understood where we were going with the .3, looking at it not only from adding it to the six projects, making it the seventh, and going to the community with the zoo as part of that platform, but also how short of a timeframe it'll actually take to generate $800,000 from that .3 sales tax increase.
I think you make a good point, but I do think we should go back and look at, relook at this. Just because we have a funding source from the sales tax doesn't mean we should accept something that we might have room to go back and reevaluate without making it less accommodating or less attractive for people to go and see. So I, although we, I don't want us to think it's okay to overbid and go extend ourselves because there is other money coming in. The community expects us to be responsible with the sales tax. And I think we will be, but I think this is something with the proposal that's in front of me, I feel more comfortable to go back and at least ask for, you know, where else can we make some cuts or look at this differently? Or I'm not sure what exactly value engineer means.
That means to find deficiencies, to change materials, to change sizes of things, to find ways to reduce that cost.
Right.
Hopefully, without sacrificing the quality of the product or increasing maintenance in the future because we chose poor quality materials. I mean, those are all considerations that we would want to work with that contractor on and then bring back to you not only the price, but also the list of items that we would recommend changing in order to get to that final price.
Right, and I think that's what I heard, so yes, I was comfortable with the motion in front of me.
Yeah, I see it a little bit simpler, maybe. I don't want to try to tell people to vote for the sales tax to support the zoo simply because I think, as the attorney said when we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, this isn't a special tax, you know, like a lot of them are. It's a tax that goes into general fund. I think we cloud what's happening if we do that. So I'd like to stay away from that. To me, this is pretty simple. You've got $4 million in the budget. And what you want to do is go back and negotiate with the contractor to spend no more than what we have in the budget. I mean, that's essentially what this motion is. That makes all the sense in the world. So you've got $4 million, you can't spend more than that. I don't want to use any general fund money and see what you can figure out. And I think there's enough wiggle room there in the project to where you can make it happen.
I'm comfortable moving forward with negotiations just because when we did talk a little bit about value engineering during the process, everybody had ideas. So I think there's some options there. And it also kind of seemed like demand for work was raising costs. Not that that's going to get any better in the next few months, but who knows? There might be some variations there as well. So it's hard for me to comment too much on budget when I don't know what the actual number is before me, if there are some things that we could cut, or maybe there's even some additional money that we can raise. But I will echo, I don't necessarily love the idea of, again, talking about sales tax, the .3%, because that thing hasn't even passed yet. And we've only been talking about it now for about two months. And that's another project that we'd be adding on to that. And Lord knows where I'll be next year, but next August, if I watch a city commission meeting and that sales tax pass and we've raised the mill levy, I'm going to be pretty disappointed because we spent all our money on other projects. So I don't love the idea of talking about it in a sales tax manner, but I'm interested to see what we can value engineer out of that and what additional money we can raise privately or find funds elsewhere.
I would support trying to renegotiate. I'm not tied to one firm. It seems to me that we could get other bids. They're all in the same range. The, my concern was that this project not go at the head of the class with regard to what the three tenths sales tax might generate and take precedent over the other projects that we think are important also. So there has to be some balance. I'd like to see this come down and whatever we have to do to bring it down. That negotiation is important. But this is an over, this is too much over what the expectation was. important. But this is an over, this, this is too much over what the expectation was. So down is good.
Is this a, did this start out as advertised as a fixed cost contract?
No.
What, what type of contract was it?
Well, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding your question.
Well, there's different kinds of contract. Fixed price contract, the contractor bids, that's the price, that's what he delivers to. Anything that's over is on the contractor. Other types of contracts, they come back and do some negotiation and it's called a cost plus contract, for, for example. So which type is this?
Well, I mean, this followed our standard process except for the selection. Probably added a qualification based component to it. And so, I mean, we, we asked, we gave a, we provided the scope of work and we asked for the price for that scope of work.
Okay. Well, when, once the contract is signed, what kind is it? Fixed price?
It's fixed, yes.
Okay. So that's kind of the bottom line here. But the expect, let's, let's try to do a couple of things. When, when we do the value engineering, as we've discussed, you know, you talked about materials, you talked about shape. We need to consider the sequence that it's built. I mean, if we're worried about alt one or a base bed precluding alt one in a timely way, then we may want to look at adjusting how those play out. In other words, you may want, want to do some of that. And then we may want to look at timing. That is, how long do we expect them to take? If part of the problem with price is the time to build it, then that's another piece of value engineering you might want to look at. So what I would say is, let's do the value engineering piece, see what we've got. And then, in accordance with some of the other commissioners have, have asked about, you can come back with a couple of options. What can you do for the four, four point zero two two million? And what can you do for the four point seven nine four, whatever it was? So we can look at it that way. And then we can move on from there. And that, that makes a pretty decent decision set when we get to that. Can you do that?
Yes, we can.
So can you hang on just a minute?
Sure.
Let's ask for public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to make a comment on this issue, please come forward. Love to hear from you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Larry Fox. I am the treasurer of the Sunset Zoo Trust Foundation. I've been that, in that position now ten years or so. As was mentioned earlier, back in two thousand four, Chuck Jackson made a major commitment to this project in the amount of five hundred thousand to move forward. And at that point, the Trust Foundation began efforts to raise money for this project. In the time period from two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, and, and by the way, our, our foundation has sixty eight members that have worked on this project extremely diligently for the last four years. So in that time, we have raised two million dollars towards this project, of which we've collected a million five in cash. So we, we have about five hundred thousand in commitments. Most of that is either from the Trust Foundation itself or from the FOS, the Friends of Sunset Zoo. So very little of it is from outstanding pledges to other individuals. So with that, I did sit on the committee that interviewed the contractors. And I would say that the comment from every contractor we heard was that it was hard to get bids from subs. With some of them, they didn't even provide bids. With others, they were at the last minute. So I, I have to believe from that scenario that many of the bids were padded. These subs, right now, are extremely busy with other construction projects, so they, you know, really don't need the work. So this, these total bids, you know, the four point eight, five million range, they're, they're very padded bids. I, I have been involved with several construction projects through the university, through my work at the foundation. And I can tell you that it is very common for initial bids for projects to come in well over the budgeted amount, to the tune of a million, two million dollars. We're experiencing this now with existing projects on campus, McCain Auditorium expansion, Multicultural Center, KDA projects. You know, these subs are just very busy. So to, to move forward, I, you know, it would be my opinion to select the contractor that is, we feel most qualified. And, you know, the comment was made, well, why don't we involve more than one? Well, you can't do that when you're value engineering. You have to pick a contractor to work with. And in this case, our committee determined that KBS Constructors was the most qualified of the four. They turned in the, the most complete bid. So in my opinion, anyway, they should be the ones that, that we work with to try to get this done. But, you know, the bottom line is the city has two million dollars sitting there. Our Zoo Trust Foundation has two million dollars sitting there. We can't let any of that money go to waste. We can't just throw this project away. And I, I feel that it's a very high probability that we can get this cost down to within our budget. So I would recommend, on behalf of the Zoo Trust Foundation, that we work with KBS Constructors to value engineer this project down to within our four million dollar number. Not looking for any more money. We have plenty. And get the job done. Any questions?
Thanks, Larry. Appreciate it.
I like your view.
Anyone else, please? Hey, seeing no one, we'll come back to the commission for other comments or?
Uh, just quickly, he made a, he made a really good point about the padding of the sub contractor bids, which is something that we heard from almost everybody, that they felt like through either A, the lack of detail, or B, not knowing exactly how busy they were, that they were adding some padding. So even throughout, aside from value engineering, hopefully there will be cost savings there too, once we can move forward and actually start negotiations and solid dates and things of that nature. So I think that was a very good point that he mentioned that I, I, I'd forgot about during that process.
Once, my experience is, and things of this nature, if, if you are not a, a local contractor taking on something like this, and you don't have kind of the input from the subs that know local conditions, particularly when you're maybe boring through rock or something like that, that you do have to be a little bit cautious on initial bid. Otherwise, you know, fixed pick cost contract, you get yourself in trouble real quick. So I am hopeful that with further negotiations and discovery with our subs, then we'll be able to work this down a little bit.
I just want to commend the community, the Friends of the Zoo, the Trust for raising two million dollars. That is a high and worthy goal and quite an accomplishment. And so I'm not trying to diminish that at all. It was just probably sticker shock. So I'm eager to see what can be done.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we accept the architect's opinion of probable cost and the total amount of three million, two hundred thirty nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty seven dollars and sixty two cents, base bid in the amount of two million, six hundred and sixty seven thousand, four hundred and thirty two dollars, alternate one in the amount of five hundred and sixty two thousand, four hundred and ninety five dollars and sixty two cents, and alternate two in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Reject all bids. Utilize an alternative selection process pursuant to section three of charter ordinance number forty four to award and authorize city administration to negotiate and execute a consultant contract with KBS Constructors of Topeka, Kansas, to value engineer the project and to negotiate a construction contract with KBS, subject to future city commission approval, for a total price based upon available funding for the Expedition Asia, Asia exhibit SZ zero four two P.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
It will now move to item C, which is a discussion on e-scooters and their operations in the city. And the presenter will be Jared Wassinger.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I was going to ride in on an e-scooter to start off my presentation. Fortunately, Chief French would not let me borrow his, so I'm just going to jump right into this. There's been a lot of growth. You know, the e-scooter craze has kind of swept not only the state, but the country, and it's also really taken off globally. We've seen a lot of e-scooter companies specifically deploy their fleets as an alternative mode of transportation for residents and visitors in these communities. We also are seeing a lot of individuals purchase their own e-scooters and use them as their own source of transportation as opposed to a bike or other public transportation. I, I have up here a picture of an e-scooter. This is just one that you can purchase from Walmart for about three hundred and fifty bucks. You know, it's got the two wheels, you stand on it, you got the handlebar with an accelerator at the top and a brake in the front or the back and a kickstand. There was a lot of, I guess you could call them first generation issues with e-scooter companies. The original model back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, when these companies really started taking off and there were multiple different brands of e-scooters, they really took the idea of dropping them into a large cities, you know, hundreds of scooters where people could download the app. There wasn't a lot of notice to local governments or universities. You know, there wasn't a lot of time to educate the public on where, how to use them. A lot of states, including the state of Kansas, hadn't even adopted specific descriptions, definitions, and regulations for how to regulate them from a traffic standpoint. Over time, there, there's been changes in the e-scooter company industry. A lot of these companies have taken note of that. They've changed their product. They've tried to make them more safer. They try and work with municipalities, enter into agreements, make sure that they're doing the right things that communities want from a safety education standpoint. And then recently, the state of Kansas has actually adopted legislation in regards to defining e-scooters and regulating them. Just for your own edification, you know, over the last year, we did have a few e-scooter companies reach out to the city of Manhattan. They also reached out to Kansas State University, a few of them. We, as a group, kind of got together. We have a monthly town gown association meeting where we talk about certain town gown issues. Administration at the university was getting approached by a few e-scooter companies. We were getting some calls. At the very same time, the Student Governing Association at K-State was in the process of negotiating with Vioride for a bike share program on their campus. So at that time, because, you know, the state law was silent, we really decided to notify these companies that we weren't interested. We were going to wait for the state law to pass. And then from the student's perspective, they were really just focused on getting their bike share program going. And they didn't want to have to deal with another mode of transportation to, to figure out and negotiate at that time. So they're in the process of, of working through that bike share program with Vioride and hoping to start that next fall. So Senate Bill sixty three was passed this two thousand nineteen legislative session. I have the, the definition of, up here of an e-scooter, you know, self-propelled vehicle, two wheels in contact with the ground, electric motor, motor, handlebars, a brake, and a deck that's designed to be stood on while riding. The Senate Bill sixty three regulates it from the Uniform Traffic Act standpoint, the same way that the state proposes the regulation of bicycles. From where they can be ridden, how they can be ridden, regulations from, you know, anything from hand signals when you're driving on the street, to the need for a back reflector in a front headlight at night. Also, within Senate Bill sixty three, it allows cities to be more restrictive from the state law. So certain cities can decide to not allow e-scooters ridden in their community. They can make certain regulations on where they can be ridden. And that's really what we're going to be discussing today. So we adopt the standard traffic ordinance every fall. Probably going to be bringing it to you, to the commission here in August or September. And that's the standard traffic ordinance that the League of Kansas Municipalities puts together. And it takes into account all the changes in traffic regulations that have occurred over the last session. And it provides guidance to, you know, the city to adopt those regulations so that we can educate the public and that our CPD can enforce those regulations. At certain times, we adopt or amend portions of the STO to fit our city, our community. And this is an opportunity for us in the fall to have this discussion tonight and then come forward with any necessary changes that we feel would be beneficial to the community for regulations of e-scooters. Before we had this discussion item with the city commissioners, we wanted to get some feedback from our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, as well as our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The reason for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is because the Uniform Traffic Act that the state passes, and our STO regulates with traffic regulations, but it doesn't necessarily talk about parks and trails, which are, you know, outside of that realm. But cities can, of course, create regulations regarding the usage of bicycles, motorized vehicles, any other type of vehicle on city parks and trails. So we wanted to get that feedback as well. BPAC and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, they both, there was all general consensus that this should be, you know, allowed. We should allow e-scooters in the community. They saw the benefit as an alternative mode of transportation. And, you know, there was general consensus that, once we talked about the regulations on the usage of e-scooters, that the, the city may benefit from exploring a partnership with an e-scooter company. And, you know, they really wanted to defer to staff's recommendations on, from a technical standpoint on where they could be ridden, how they could be ridden. They wanted us to explore similar ordinances like other cities. We kind of gave them the Topeka ordinance that was in your packet, as well as the Wichita one. So they thought that some of those further regulations may be necessary, just because it's a new form of transportation. There was expressed, there was concern expressed from both regarding speed limits on sidewalks. So they wanted to make sure that we looked into that. And I'll talk a little bit about what Topeka and, what Topeka and Wichita do. And then the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, from a parks and trails standpoint, was okay with allowing them within parks and trails. Before I jump into other cities, I do want to just mention our regulations as they do relate to bicycles in the city of Manhattan. So right now, we allow them on streets and sidewalks, and, but we do not allow bicycles on sidewalks in downtown and Aggieville. I did put together a matrix of just what Topeka and Wichita, they've been kind of the first communities in Kansas to really adopt specific ordinances related to the usage of e-scooters. And they have also taken the next steps of actually entering into partnership agreements with e-scooter companies. Both Topeka and Wichita, they do allow e-scooters on their stra- streets. I put an asterisk up there just because they limit that to a street that is Topeka, for example. It has to be a street that's 35 miles per hour or lower, unless there's a bike lane that they could use. And Wichita is the same, but it's, the speed limit is 40 miles an hour for those roads. Topeka does allow them on sidewalks, except for it's, one of their downtown avenues between Fifth and Tenth Street, so they don't allow it in one of their districts, kind of like we don't allow bicycles on sidewalks within our, you know, entertainment districts. Wichita took the stance on no e-scooters on sidewalks. Both of them took kind of a regulation on speed limits, as you can see up there. Age restrictions was, it was interesting, Topeka took it from a broad perspective, even if you have a privately-owned scooter and you're a resident of the community, and you have to be 16 years of age or older to ride one. Wichita only took, they were silent on that in their ordinance, but in their agreement with the e-scooter company, they made it so that you had to be 18 years or older to rent an e-scooter and ride it around in the community. Topeka did include a helmet requirement for any of those riders under 18. Wichita did not include that in their ordinance related to usage, but they did, you know, later on, include that, at least education perspective, from their contract with an e-scooter company. And then both went into parking requirements. Parking requirements from a usage standpoint, it really gets into, when we talk about, in the event the community wants to enter into a partnership with an e-scooter company, because they are dockless, and they kind of put them all around the community, and people can ride them and park them. So both of these ordinances from these cities took into account that, okay, we're gonna make restrictions on where you can park these so that you're not obstructing, you know, pedestrian traffic. You're not putting them in the middle of sidewalks. You're putting them in bike racks or in between the curb from the street and the sidewalk where those open spaces are.
How did they, did they talk at all, or when you were looking at, how did they enforce that?
So their ordinance would be enforced by their police, and just as ours would be. So if we-
But I'm riding my e-scooter, and I dump it in a bush, and I walk away.
Is it your e-scooter, or is it a company's?
It's Bird's e-scooter.
It's Bird's e-scooter, okay. So Bird's e-scooter-
Who gets fined for that? Who's, what's the enforcement for that?
Well-
It's just in the bush.
It's just in the bush?
Yeah.
I don't know what bush you're talking about. Say it's a bush in city park.
Okay.
And we put specifically in our ordinance that you can't dump them in parks, that it's gotta be on a sidewalk, then we would probably work with the company from a understanding of, hey, we just got this complaint that someone left it in a bush. Who was the last person to use it? And then maybe, kind of like Uber or something like that, you wouldn't be allowed to use it anymore, and you could work in those regulations and enforcements. A lot of the agreements that these communities go into, they put in there that there needs to be a response time if the municipality contacts the e-scooter company because of they're dumped somewhere or they're obstructing trafficway, and then one of their employees would have to move forward with it. I want to add, from our 2019 community survey, there was, you know, over 76% support for increased access to alternative modes of public transportation, so it is something that the community is possibly seeking for the usage of e-scooters. So for tonight, I do want to, because I know we're getting into questions about e-scooter companies, and that's really where there's a lot of debate and maybe possibly concern, but for our standpoint tonight, we're really trying to be, prepare ourselves for this fall so we can adopt this STO and use the, you know, define e-scooters, define where they can be ridden, define how they can be ridden. We could address some of these additional regulations if the commission is willing, and then after that, we can possibly, you know, if the governing body is also willing to do so, we could discuss if they're comfortable with entering into a relationship with an e-scooter company. So tonight, it's really a series of questions. Do you want to allow e-scooters, right? If you do, then we'll move forward with these other questions. If you don't, then we'll just say that they're not allowed based on the definition that was provided in the Senate Bill sixty-three, and then we won't allow them in the community. If you do want to allow the usage of e-scooters in the community, do you want to treat them the same way as bicycles? So do you want to allow them on streets and sidewalks? We would probably recommend that, you know, we wouldn't want to allow them on sidewalks in downtown and Aggieville, as we do bicycles, to keep that consistent with our local regulations. So if you want to do that, then that's pretty simple, and we can adopt, you know, amend the STO. If you want to add additional regulations about speed limits, age requirements, parking requirements, parks and trails, where they can be ridden, that's where we're also looking for feedback, and then we can craft that for when we come back to the fall, in the fall, to adopt the STO. I will add that what we can also do, too, is when we adopt the STO, we can, you know, define these e-scooter ride-share companies who are basically accessing our public right-of-way, and we can make a stipulation within the ordinance that, you know, they wouldn't be able to deploy their fleet throughout the community without first entering into an agreement with the city. In that way, you know, that fear of someone just dropping 100 of these overnight, you know, wouldn't be there.
I wanted to ask one other question. I was reading a lot about this e-scooter thing, and I think, you know, our focus seems to be on worrying about these companies bringing them in here, but what about private citizens buying them? So when we do this regulation, we need to think about that, because I was looking at what was available out there, and there's all these different models of e-scooters. You know, some of them almost look like motorcycles, but I guess they don't require a tag, and some of them will go 54 miles an hour, according to the specs. And then, of course, that's a whole lot different than the picture of what you're showing up there. And, of course, that's one of the lesser-priced ones, you know, about $390, I think, at Walmart, and some are a little bit less, and, you know, there's some that go up to a couple thousand dollars and even look like a small car. And so I think it's, it's gonna be interesting, the definition of what an e-scooter is. It may have to be tied into, you know, what's your requirement for a license. There's also electric bikes out there now, and I mean, they're not e-scooters, but, you know, would they, would they fall under the bicycle thing? So this wasn't as simple as I thought it was gonna be. But when I started reading that, and I'm very concerned about people just, you know, ordering one of these things online, and if our regulations are focused on an 18 mile an hour, you know, company e-scooter, and then I go buy one that's 54, and we say I can ride it on the sidewalk, we got a problem, you know, because that isn't gonna work too well. And I don't know what the answer is to that, but I just want to be sure that whatever we craft is, is broad enough to understand that the market's not just all 18 miles. And then, as I looked at some of the specs, some of these things don't have odometers or speedometers. So how do you know how fast you're going? That's another issue. It's an add-on thing if you buy one, and I don't know if these companies, you know, have it on there or not, but I think that's something we've got to require. And, you know, my thought on that, you know, if we use the bicycle regulations, not gonna quite work the same because of the speed of these things. You know, are we gonna end up putting speed limit signs on our sidewalks for, for e-scooters? I mean, that's all the thoughts that came through my mind.
To answer-
Because I didn't really see a problem with, with the e-scooter on the sidewalk if it's going, you know, 15 miles an hour, 10 miles an hour, but I don't want one of these things zipping down there at 30. You know, that's, that's, that's an issue for me, so.
So to touch on a couple of your questions, this is the definition that the state provides of what an e-scooter is. There's, there is already existing definitions in the STO related to electronic bicycles, I believe, and others, so those are already within there, defined and regulated. From the speed perspective, who would enforce that? Say, you know, if you bought an e-scooter that could go up to 20, 25 miles an hour, and we only limit it to 15 miles an hour on sidewalks, that would, I believe, be Riley County Police Department who would enforce that, and they would need to be able to track that on one of their, you know, speedometers, so.
Because we could put policemen on e-scooters, right, and they can zip up and down the sidewalk? I know Dennis, he likes that one, right? E-scooter patrol.
So we discussed this at the International Town Gown Meetings that we had last year, and SGA was not for them at that, at that time. I don't know where they stand this time around. This is one of those things that just evolves and sometimes gets better, because most cities were in the same predicament that we were in, where there were no regulations, and companies were just coming and kind of dumping them there, and people were just using them.
I spoke with members of the student body vice president of the SGA, who's working in our office this summer, and they don't really have a stance for or against, you know, they're, they're kind of focused on getting their bike, bike share program going. So I know during the ITGA group last year, when there was different representation from SGA, that was the few individuals who were on SGA, who were on our committee, who kind of voiced those concerns.
Yeah, there was a strong opposition to it, mainly also because of the danger part of it. I think being open to ideas and trends such as this is a good thing for our community, especially being a university town. When you say, what do we do with our community? Are you talking about campus? Would that apply to campus? Or, let's say we don't want it in the city, just hypothetically. Can the campus still do it on their own on the university side?
I believe on campus, they have to follow this, maybe the same traffic regulations that we implement in the city.
They, they can implement the rules. The problem with campuses, all the portions of it are city right-of-way.
Right.
And all the portions of it that are city right-of-way, the STO would apply. So within maybe the, the interior of campus, it would be true that they could allow them, but it would be an issue of anything that borders city right-of-way. It wouldn't be allowed under the STO if the city commission would abandon it.
That, well, I'm glad you clarified that. My daughter is a pediatrician, and she sees some of these kids that are coming in with all kinds of injuries, and so she, she herself does not like them. But I also saw it when we were in DC. Somebody was just driving down, and they just flopped right off of it, and then nothing bad happened, but they have to use the roads. Be a friendly user along with the roads and the bicyclists and the cars. So from the ordinances that I saw in Topeka and Wichita, they're implementing it. Do you have any information from already cities that have implemented it that are our size, or that are our communities, not, not on the coasts? I'm talking more like where it's already been piloted with ordinances. What kind of, is PD having a problem enforcing these laws? Are the citizens, are there more injuries? Are they all wearing helmets? Because I also read in some places where they don't want e-scooter drivers to wear helmets. So do you have any feedback that's out there, other than the study that was provided?
Most would probably be anecdotal, just because this is new, and a lot of these, at least cities in Kansas specifically, are just now starting it. Other cities, you know, there are similar-sized cities like Stillwater, Norman, you know, other Midwest cities who are implementing these, and throughout the Midwest, and partnering with e-scooter companies. So, but I'm sure, you know, there are benefits and drawbacks that they're working through and dealing with. A lot of these communities, again, when we get to the, the e-scooter company, they enter into pilot programs, you know, probably, you know, anywhere from four to six months in length, so that they can get a feel for it. They require data sharing. They require communication with the e-scooter company. So when these issues come about, say about parking, or say about speed limits, you know, they, they can work with that company to address them. For another instance, from the e-scooter company, from the rental perspective, is in that agreement, they can limit the speed on the e-scooters if you require them to. So there's no way that it can get more than 15 miles an hour if you say it to, or if the, in the event that K-State says that they don't want them on campus, there's geo-fencing through GPS that can map out where these places are that they can't be ridden, and then they'll just stop, and they won't work. So there's ways around, there's a lot of new innovative ways that these companies are working with cities to really, you know, calm any nerves about, you know, issues that may arise, but...
Yeah, so I think it would be good to have some kind of an ordinance, but as far as, like Westar, would they be involved with that, with the company? Because these have to be charged somewhere on some kind of a docking system. So that would be a different agreement with Westar and whatever, whichever company is doing it.
So-
Or how is Westar involved in all of this?
From a company standpoint, what, Westar would not be involved. What these companies do is they employ local residents to manage their fleet, maintain their fleet, charge e-scooters overnight. So that would be the responsibility of the employees to-
There's not a docking system? I thought a docking system has a-
No, so these are dockless. So from an e-scooter company perspective, they're dockless, and the fact that overnight, either companies can switch out e-scooters or switch out batteries on the e-scooters without actually taking the e-scooter, you know, off-site to somewhere to charge.
Well, somebody's paying that bill.
Yeah, it would be the employee of the-
Yeah, they literally take them back to their house and charge them.
That's what I'm saying. So they, or the dorms, I don't know.
They get paid like per, they get paid like per scooter that they find, and essentially they take them home and charge them, and they pay that fee.
Yeah. So I, so that's one of the things, but my, my main concern is safety. Safety and traffic confusion. I mean, we had enough confusion with just roundabouts. So if you see e-scooters coming and going, I just want to make sure that we address these, and though I prefer some kind of an ordinance and then do a pilot program once we have an ordinance in place, if this is the route that we, we choose to go. I don't want to just do a pilot program without having any kind of ordinance in place as far as rules and regulations.
And, and again, we're not proposing that either. We'd like to, you know, discuss how the city commission feels that these should be used from a, from a public perspective, and then after we adopt the STO, we can certainly, you know, if there's interest from e-scooter companies, and interest from the community and the governing body, we could have those discussions then, too. And then, of course, you could always further regulate the e-scooter company.
Right. Okay. I'll wait for more discussion. I'd be interested in hearing from the public. I especially am interested in input from K-State, our, our partner in this, because K-State is in the heart of our community. And so it seems to me that we have to go forward together, and so that would be important, as would Aggieville and downtown, and I think they have representatives here, and members of the public always, so.
Of course.
There's more to, for us to hear.
Just a couple of comments here. This is obviously all part of a growing transportation network that kind of makes sure that parties have an ability to get from point A to point B and maybe change transportation modes in between. And my assumption is that these will be used by a particular demographic. I probably won't be writing one. Not that I couldn't, but I'm not sure that suits me very well. But I think whatever we do, we've got to do it consistent with K-State, because, I mean, if you look at the demographic and then say, well, you can't write them on K-State, it doesn't make much sense for us to have them in the city. So as we go through this, I think we've got to really make sure that we're tied in close with K-State on this. And I don't quite understand the, the difference. I mean, some of these folks had what might be termed a provisional ordinance or something, but is there a particular term of art that differentiates something that is somewhat temporary from just passing an ordinance? I mean, we have the ability to go back and change it anyway, right?
Yeah, we can, we can change the ordinance. The, the temporary aspect of the pilot program relates to the ordinance or the program you have with the company.
Yeah.
So you could do that on a temporary basis.
Yeah.
But the, the use regulations, which Jared has talked about, point number one up there, they'd apply to any, anyone who owned one, regardless of whether it's through a company or not. And you could repeal that if you find that the use is not, if you want to change the use in the future.
Yeah, good. And then, you know, some of these things, whatever we do, I just want to make sure if it's a vendor, that the, the standpoints of liability and insurance are considered, because all kinds of things can go wrong, and somebody has to assume that. And the city, if you just let them come in wholesale, the city would perhaps assume some risks that we don't want on that. And the intermixing of bicycles and pedestrians and bicycles and cars is also currently somewhat problematic. It's not a big issue, but I find it an issue when bicycles mix with cars, because that's a no-win for the bicyclist. And so here, we've got another me- we've got another means of conveyance that arguably is more interference with pedestrians perhaps than cars, although the car interference would be tough. The other things I kind of worry about, even with pedestrians now, is that many people are wearing headphones. And personally, I've driven up to intersections and people just step off the intersection without even looking, looking down at a phone with headphones on. And so I think we've got to figure that out too. Because I mean, this, this is kind of the defensive driving technique. How can you be, have enough defensive technique if you can't hear anything that, you know, with traffic coming and so on? And then I didn't see anything in here about helmets. Oh, yes, I did. Didn't you say that in some cases they don't want helmets?
Right.
Yeah. So this may be part of, can I hear what's going on around me kind of deal? So anyway, those are just some of the things that I think about. But primarily, if we bring them in, we have to be able to license the company, enter into an agreement with them and make sure we're indemnified with insurance and so on.
I will just touch on two points. A lot of the agreements that you saw in your packet and the best practice that municipalities and these companies are doing is addressing the liability within the agreement. And that typically falls on the e-scooter company. From the, I guess, bicycle multimodal infrastructure perspective, again, a lot of these e-scooter companies, when they enter into an agreement to access your public right of way and to deploy their fleets, they'll give the municipality a certain portion of their proceeds. And then a lot of communities, they'll dedicate that back to bicycle lanes or other multimodal infrastructure.
I also wanted to thank the KSU student who did that study in there. If you read through that study, it was quite comprehensive. I think they covered just about all the kind of questions you might have. So really good job on that one. Public comment. So now it's time for a public comment. If anyone has a comment on this issue of e-scooters, please come forward.
Good evening. Dennis Cook with Aggieville Business District. We have not had a formal discussion about any of this, but some of the informal discussions we've had, our main concern would be, actually with Jared, with your comment about just dumping it someplace. And we've, you know, our concern would be that Aggieville would be a destination place and they would just end up everywhere. We've done, we've done a little bit of research into that and, you know, how you're renting those, if they're renting them, it's through an app and then they're just, you know, they click off that they're done. But you can actually, they can set those things up to be geo fenced to where if they don't get back to, you know, it's not a docking station, but it's a location. Until it gets to a location, they're going to continue to charge that person. And I think that would be an answer to what you were talking about. So if somebody decided to just be done with it and drop it off in the bush, you know, number one, the company can track and they know where it is, but the company is continuing to charge that person because you didn't get it to a required location. And so, you know, we would be happy to, you know, the idea I think sounds great and, you know, we'd be happy to help do whatever we could, maybe define that, those kind of spaces, you know, around Aggieville on a perimeter site. But that would be our biggest concern to be where they are allowed to be dumped. And so if we could geo fence that and find proper locations so that they don't just add them outside of whatever, whatever location they were coming into in Aggieville and just park there, that's not going to work for us. Not on the sidewalk, not on the street. That would be our thought.
Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it.
My name is Brandon Savage. I live at 3118 Amerist Avenue. I am a local resident businessman and K-State faculty and enthusiast about e-scooters. Over a year ago, as I saw this beginning to develop in other cities, I proactively reached out to Bird and to Lime, two of the largest providers, just asking, what can I do as a grassroots enthusiast to try to build support and to help make these come to this community? I saw the value that it could bring to students that I interact with on a regular basis. I saw how it could bring value to our entertainment districts and making it so there's less cars in those areas and making it more accessible for people. And I can tell that Bird has, within hours, got back to me and I've had ongoing discussions with their rep over the last year. In anticipation of this meeting, I asked if I could get some loners to bring here into demo. I drove out to Kansas City yesterday and picked up two of these. Anyone who'd like to try them for a ride afterwards, I'll stick around in front. A couple of things that I think that haven't been discussed already. When this was looked at a year ago, really the industry had only been around for six to nine months. Over the last year, there have been tens of millions of these e-scooter rides with the larger providers. And they've been able to gather a lot of data. And we talk about safety. They've been able to identify that the injury rate for e-scooters is at equivalent of bicycles. And I think there's a reason that Kansas State, when looking at how to classify this, treated it as a bicycle. You can see, this is, I don't have a lot of protection when I'm on this. If I'm going 30 miles per hour, just in a canyon, whether it's a person stepping in front of you, cars stepping in front of you, or a traffic in the street, I'm the one that's probably most likely to get injured. So there's always self-preservation that whoever's riding it wants to try to be safe and only go as fast as they feel like they can. And in some areas, I've ridden this in lots of different cities in the United States, there are some streets where the sidewalk feels safer to me. Because the street doesn't have a bike lane, the street has faster traffic. There are other places where the street feels safer than the sidewalk. As I was letting some people demo these this morning, and I want to apologize to the downtown points, I didn't know that some of the things had changed here. And I thought that we were still under the legislation that if this was on the street, we would get in trouble. And so as we were demoing, we were walking, riding it on the sidewalks in downtown points until someone educated us. And I can tell you, none of us felt comfortable riding it on the sidewalk in downtown points. You never know when someone's going to walk at one of those doors. Once we moved to the street, it felt a lot safer. Helmets, I'll read the, down here, the Bird's rules are helmet required, license required, no riding on sidewalks, no level riding at 18 years old or older. That's kind of their general rules. I imagine any bicycle that you buy for yourself or for your kids is going to tell you, you have to wear a helmet when you ride this piece of equipment. But as a state, we've decided how we treat bicycles. I would argue that as you're looking for ordinances for this, think, why don't we have that same rule for a bike? Because I think that most of the ways that we should treat this should be exactly as we're treating bikes. They have the same speed profile, they have the same risk profile, and over the last year and a half of data, they have the same injury profile as a bike. Last few things I want to cover. Competition wise, if you decide to allow e-scooters, I would say that you should not just pick one, that you should allow at least two. Because all of these companies are wanting to make cities happy. And as you're saying, these are the things that we want you to be able to do, you'll be able to say which of them is being more responsive and allow you to potentially threaten the other to lose their contract rather than having one feel like they've already been picked and they don't necessarily need to respond as quickly. The last thing I wanted to add is that over the last year, the technology has advanced. And as was mentioned, what wasn't available a year ago, but is now available now when it comes to parking, is in addition to being able to create no parking zones where the meter still keeps ticking, you can designate on their app specific parking areas where you do want them to park. And they will provide a credit to the user. If they end their ride in that particular area, they will get a credit towards their next ride. So there's a financial incentive for them to put it where you park. Now, as a city, we need to provide that information to them. There is also geo fencing for speed, has been mentioned. That there are certain areas where you don't want it to go 20 miles per hour, you want it to be 10, 5, you can work with the providers to do that as well. I hope that you would adopt these. I hope you really try to treat them as bikes, because I think that's how they should be treated.
Brandon, I just have one question. Did you say something about license required? It said license required. What does that mean?
For Bird, for Bird, being 18 years and older, they have as part of the app, when you register for it, the way that they verify that you're 18 is you actually have to take a picture of your driver's license on the app and they're able to verify your age and the fact that you know how to drive as a requirement for renting one of these. Correct. That's what the license means, is that they're verifying that you, you know how to drive a car. And those same principles would apply to driving an e-scooter.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Well, my name is Linda Cook. I'm Chief of Staff and Director of Community Relations for Kansas State University. And as Jared indicated, we did talk about this. It was about a year ago that Bird had approached Kansas State University about contracting with us to offer the e-scooters on campus. And that's when we got our town gown group together because we realized you're not going to contain them only on campus, that it's a community type of mode of transportation. So, and at the time, I mean, and safety still is the concern. And making sure if this does move forward, that we have the type of ordinances that support safety, you know, for wherever they would be ridden. We are a little bit concerned on campus, the climate a year ago. And again, the industry's changed and progressed and improved a lot since then. But a number of the students were, in the student leadership group, were concerned. And the preference was not to allow them on campus. Campus security preferred not to have them on campus. And we, more or less at that time, determined we would ban them from campus. And that's where we weren't sure if you could ban them from the community or not. And there was the state, the legislation that had to be addressed. So looking at it now today, you know, we are willing to entertain the idea and bring the groups back together to talk about, you know, what is realistic. And when we had determined to ban them, I did get calls from student groups and from faculty who were still interested in trying to pursue it in the future. But I think all are concerned about, on campus in particular, what rules would they follow? And the biggest concern about safety is between classes. When the sidewalks are congested, you've got people trying to walk. And that's where we have bike rules as well. And in some of those areas, you can't ride your bike. So the scooters, e-scooters would likely have to follow those types of rules and regulations. So, you know, that was, that's the primary of concern. And then also is the issue with the parking and not having them dumped in different places on campus. But again, there's a lot of settings that they can change now with the app that will help to protect that. So we're not ready to jump in and say, yes, we want to do it right away. But we think, you know, it's something we want to work with the community on as well. And we need to get our Chief of Security back into some discussions on this and our facilities people to understand, you know, what, what would the rules and regulations be. We recognize a lot of people are concerned about, you know, the environmental imprint and impact. And that came out in the study that the student and the professor indicated. And that's, you know, when you're just doing that one to five miles, you're not getting in your vehicle and driving it around, you are reducing some of the emissions and load that impact the environment. So there are some of those benefits to it because it's particularly a one to five mile range use. And one of our concerns too was, we don't want the, you know, students driving them around in Aggieville. And we know you can shut them down at eight o'clock, you get a warning. So, you know, they're, they're not going to have those types of issues. But it is, again, what ordinances do we put in place? Or how do we work with the companies to make sure that these, these e-scooters aren't just in a, in an area where people will trip over them or they'll other cause accidents? And again, we are working on our bicycle program. That's still in a contractual area, working with the, our purchasing agent. So hopefully, we'll be getting those bikes in as well. And we know that that particular company also now is into the e-scooter market because they see that market continuing to grow. So we're here to work with you on it and recognize that there's still a number of concerns. We just need to get people back together and complement each other's ordinances or whatever path we decide to go forward. So, any questions for me?
When do you plan to implement the VO bicycles?
Well, the VO, I think the
Bike share?
The bikes, yeah, the bike share. I think they're, to get the bikes in this fall.
Fall?
Is the plan. It's really kind of held up in purchasing right now. It's more just getting that contract set. And we decided not to try to do it during the summer, wait and let the students come back. So I think the plan is sometime this fall.
And I think someone mentioned in another conversation that the Board of Regents has kind of, is working across the board? Is that something
I'm not familiar with that.
You know about? Okay. All right, thank you.
I mean, it could be. It's not anything that, and we just, we talked about this in our leadership group, you know, just this past week. And I'm not, and President Myers did not mention it. So he's, and it doesn't mean that they aren't, but it just hasn't reached our level yet.
Yeah, okay.
And I do have to say, I mean, we do have students riding them on campus today. So that's that independent UCD that's out there. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
You can just give us the whole thing.
I'm Gina Scroggs, Director of Downtown Manhattan. And I thought I would let photos speak a thousand words. It is true, this morning I was walking around downtown and lo and behold, there were e-scooters on my sidewalks and I about had a heart attack. Also, as you can see from that very first photo, he drove his, or rode his e-scooter right past the dismount sign, which is on the second page. These are on all the corners. So we have ordinances in place right now that don't allow bikes on the sidewalk. And as you can see from two afternoons of taking photos, we have lots and lots of bikes parking and riding on our sidewalks, despite the fact that we have ordinances in place. I'm the most unpopular person in the room. I know this. I'm the most uncool person in the room. I recognize this. But I'm also charged with thinking about unintended consequences and being realistic about the behaviors of humans. And they ride all forms of transportation other than cars on downtown sidewalks. And they do it in Aggieville too. So if something like this was to go forward in our district, we would need, or we would, my business owners, the majority of them, would need to have lots of regulation in place, but also lots of enforcement in place. And I need for us to have a conversation about enforcement and how, how we would do this. How, I mean, we, these bikes are dumped and parked, all forms of bikes are dumped and parked in the downtown district. You probably have all seen them. Scooters are going to be the same way. I mean, it's just human nature. I think if you've been to any big city, you've probably seen that. We built downtown to be a walking district. I really don't want to change that. I don't want to have those problems. I'm in favor of some sort of boundary, the geo boundaries. That would be great. Don't want to be, I don't, I'm not here to just say, no, no, no. But really have to have the conversations about safety, have to have the conversations about enforcement. I mean, we, it's clear that sidewalks are a form of a highway in downtown. That's all I have for now. If I need to line my business people up, I will.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello. I had a few prepared remarks, but I think I'll go off script just to address some of the concerns that have been addressed. So, I'm here on behalf of BikeWalk MHK. We work to enable safe and equitable active transportation on Manhattan's streets, sidewalks, and trails. I'm here to encourage you to approve e-scooters with regulations. There's a few things I just want to highlight based on the conversations today. So, one of the things that's really important to understand is that the geo fencing is super accurate. So, in cities and communities where I've used these, if you are literally one step out of the box, it won't let you turn it off. So, the market disciplines behavior because you'll just get charged as that scooter is in the bush or unaccounted for. To address some of the concerns around riding on sidewalks or maybe on areas of campus with trails, actually, e-scooters would be better than bikes because you could geo cash areas on campus where the e-scooters would just shut off before they enter. So, I think that those are, this geo caching and creating agreements with the companies are a great way to go and to address those concerns. The other element I think that was highlighted, I would also support a commission being formed of experts that know best practices and research around this area to help the city develop, help the city and K-State develop those policies. I think there's best practices that have already been established. I think one aspect of this as well is to be conscious of the e-scooter company that K-State and the community contracts with. Some of the larger companies have like self-imposed taxes that can be used to support active transportation infrastructure. So, what I would propose as well is that the city consider that those funds that are generated from e-scooter use be reinvested into the bike ped systems plan. So, in a context where we're constantly looking for revenue sources, this is a great opportunity for K-State and the city to be innovative and attract, you know, folks here. So, just a few other things that I'll highlight. So, one, if you are a pro-business person, this is a market-based solution to address transportation issues. It also creates part-time work opportunities. So, the way that these scooters work is people enroll to be chargers. So, they pick up the scooters, they maintain the scooters, they get paid for that. It's a great way to earn some extra money. Also, if you're concerned around equity, this is also addressing equity issues. The research suggests that e-scooters help close the one-mile gap that public transportation leaves. So, I know the City Commission has recently supported the Atobus. E-scooters can be a complement to that to help address transportation equity and accessibility issues. Also, the research suggests that there's a gender dynamic to this, that e-scooters are a gateway mode of transportation for women that might be reluctant to walk or ride a bike. Also, this is a quality of life issue, right? So, when we think about attracting the types of students that we want to attend K-State, also the professionals we want to stay here in Manhattan, these are the types of amenities that people are becoming to expect, right? So, when we look at our peer and aspirational college towns, they've already adopted this stuff, you know, so it's already in practice. The other aspect as well is that the research suggests that over 80% of all e-scooters are operated within a two-mile radius. And for a community like Manhattan, that connects K-State, Aggieville, and the downtown Business District. So, just to reiterate, I, here representing the people, BikeWalk MHK, I'd really encourage you to approve e-scooters with regulations by commissioning an expert task force to help develop those commission, those regulations. Be very conscious of the companies that the city works with and also that any funds that are generated from those agreements go back into funding the bike ped systems plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon, Brent, could you say your name?
Oh, Brandon Cleaver.
And your address? I think everybody.
1405 Pierre.
Our city clerk relies on that for the minutes.
I'm Dennis Butler. I'm the Director of the Riley County Police Department. I actually came tonight just to educate myself about what was before you. I didn't plan on speaking after hearing much of the information that was shared tonight. I felt like I should come up and provide some commentary from our perspective. I'll start out by saying, and for the people in the audience who don't know much about our department, when we weigh in on topics like this, we're always considering the balance in what we recommend, what we believe is the best approach, and minimizing the financial and social cost to public safety is one of those primary things that we're always looking at. I mean, we recognize that when we're trying to keep a community safe, that there's a social cost to the benefits of that in our mission and we always take that into consideration. The social cost is frequently associated with sanctions and limitations of the freedoms imposed on citizens and we never take it lightly. So, it's, we're talking about balance here. Some might think I would walk up here and just be adamantly opposed to this, but actually after hearing much of the commentary, many of the concerns that I had were addressed by those that spoke before me. But a couple of things that I would ask you to consider in your deliberations as you move forward with this discussion, and that is the safety aspect. In policing, admittedly, we're hyper vigilant when it comes to safety. We're in high-risk professions. Everything we do has a safety component added to it and how we conduct ourselves. And so, how we interact with the community, we always consider that as well. My initial concern, and I'm not an expert in e-scooters and that hasn't changed throughout tonight's discussion, is the idea of authorizing a motorized vehicle of some kind to operate on city sidewalks anywhere in the city, not just Aggieville or downtown. I have a concern about that. The other issue is, and I was glad to see when the Lime vehicle was brought up here, that there was a helmet hanging off the handlebars. In the regulation that you may pass, the ordinance you may pass, whether it involves a commercial company or people that own them privately, I would ask you to make that a requirement, that helmets be worn. It's a safety feature. If an e-scooter runs into anything larger than who's operating it, they're going to be at a disadvantage in the collision and what happens afterwards. Having a helmet and being a bicyclist myself and getting hit by a car about 30 years ago, I landed on my head and my helmet did its job and I walked away with just some road rash. If I hadn't had a helmet, it could have been much worse, if not fatal. So, those are my general concerns. I would never come up here and say, pass this, don't pass this. I just ask you to consider the safety aspect of what you do in terms of passing an ordinance to regulate these types of vehicles. And if you have any questions, I'll stand for those before I sit.
I do have a question for you. How do you, I know, how would you regulate speed on this? I mean, how would you know?
You know, I don't want to mislead you and say that enforcement on this will be diligent and regular. Depending on how many of these things end up in the city, whether they're commercial, privately owned, it'll be a challenge to consistently enforce that. I don't want to mislead you and think that we're going to be downtown or in Aggieville on a regular basis with radar guns out measuring speed of e-scooters. If they're on the sidewalk and that's prohibited, that's a much easier enforcement action to take. It's pretty obvious if they're not supposed to be on sidewalks. But when it comes to speed, I don't have a specific answer for you at this point and how we would do that, but I can almost assure you that the number of calls and complaints we would get would most likely, by the time the officer arrived there, the e-scooter and the rider would be gone if it was a speeding complaint. So, it would really be on a situation where officers would be in a position to specifically go out and force excessive speed or they would just stumble across it in the course of their normal patrol.
Right. So, my other question is, so what if it is on the sidewalk? What do you do? You're going in a car. Does a siren go off? I mean, how do you pull over somebody that?
We would try to get the rider's attention and indicate to them that they needed to stop and then investigate what was going on and potentially issue a citation or a warning. Yeah. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
My name is Jared Tremblay. I live at 525 Wickham. I believe Mr. Fees is handing out a few documents. I didn't meet the deadline. I was unaware of the deadline to do a PowerPoint, so my fault on that. I had quite a few things to say. So many things have been addressed. I'll be brief. I just want to say once again, the speed is limited so well that I was in Kansas City this weekend. The last time I was there, I was riding down Liberty Hill, anybody who's familiar with Union Station. I could not get that thing going downhill to go over 12 miles an hour and I was trying as hard as I could. It just would not do it on the sidewalk. I'm here tonight. We're not representing MPO staff. We are fully in support as staff of e-scooters. We did not have the chance to go before our policy board to get formal recommendation, but as staff, we are fully in support. I've been a Bird subscriber for over a year. I've ridden them all over the country. I've never had a crash. My eight-year-old daughter has ridden them. I know she's not supposed to, but it's perfectly fine. So, there are page numbers on the bottom of these. I would just like to skip to page three, the topic of safety. There's a picture there. It makes light of this. I'm just looking for some perspective here. So, it's, you know, it says, "I'm really worried that electric scooters are making our streets unsafe." And you can see the picture. I mean, it's all about perspective. If we turn to the next page, page four, there's a famous YouTube person in the UK killed yesterday. It has generated a ton of headlines and a ton of media. It's very unfortunate. It's a terrible accident. However, if you turn the next page, I'd like to, to page five, you'll see that in 2017 in the United States, there were 40,231 vehicle-related fatalities, 110 a day. And we just, you know, no one makes a giant case about that. There were 461 in 2017 in the state of Kansas alone, or 1.3 a day. And in Manhattan, there were three fatalities from vehicles. So, safety is a concern, but I can tell you, you all know I love to ride a bike. I prefer to ride a scooter. I feel safer. I feel more in control. I'm standing, I can jump out of the way at any time. I'm not sitting like I am on a bike. It's just a wonderful thing. I really enjoy them. And then finally, on page seven, yes, there are concerns, there's issues, but I feel they're minor in comparison with the existing concerns in transportation. There's just too many positives to say no. We would support regulation as was discussed today. And then finally, another perspective on the topic from the Boston Globe, it says, "City should welcome, indeed throw down rose petals at the sign of any innovation that lets you go downtown without dragging around two tons of steel and aluminum." And that's exactly what it's about, offering another option that is, takes up less space and it's just a great way to get around. So, with that, I don't have anything further to say, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Kevin West. I live at 321 North 16th in a neighborhood that would be affected by, and we own a business downtown in areas that would be affected by. I spent a few days last week with my younger son down in Austin, visiting the University of Texas, and we actually had a good time riding the scooters. I'll also say he's 17, got an account on his own, so I'm not too certain that all the restrictions would necessarily work. And we both went through the part that said, "Put your helmet on and do all this." And like everyone else, I think we pretty much ignored that. I liked them. They were great for getting around. I did not feel as a pedestrian, they were safe on the sidewalks. I would be worried walking around the city park, pushing a kid in a stroller, walking the dog, or if I'm mobility impaired like I am part of the time, going down the streets and having something silent behind me coming up at 16 miles an hour. I think there are ways to work around a lot of the issues. The geo fencing is effective not only for the parking, but for speed control. UT Austin, they've got their own regulations, they've got their own geo fencing, and you can tell when you get to certain parts of campus, it'll dial the speed down to eight miles an hour you can't go over. If you're downhill, you probably can. With their regulations on the campus, they seem to do a much better job of controlling parking. They were upright, they were all parked kind of in the same direction. When you got into the city with less regulation, they were just kind of everywhere. And so, that'd be one of the things I think should probably be addressed. I'd also be concerned with liability issues. I know that's been brought up. If I own a car, I've got to have liability insurance. If I own a business and I put a signboard on the sidewalk, I've got to get a permit showing that I've got liability. I think it's reasonable if there's a company operating and renting motorized vehicles in Manhattan, that they should have a licensing and insurance requirement to go with it. Also, with the technology, because the companies track who you are, where you are, where you're riding, there should probably be a provision in there that requires cooperation with law enforcement. If there's an accident, if there's a crime committed involving one of those, I think it would be reasonable as a licensed business that the scooter company should probably provide that information, especially if you've got a hit and run or you've got some other damage involving a liability or a crime. I think they're going to come. I'm not arguing against them. I kind of like them, but we do need controls on them. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
I can write and talk at the same time. My name is Vincent Tracy. I live at 304 Knoxbury here in town. And while stationed over in Europe, we had a lot of scooters being used. They were prohibited on sidewalks. And when you rode them, regardless of age, you were supposed to be wearing a helmet. And if you weren't, the German police would pull you over and give you an immediate fine. You paid 50 marks on the spot. That's something that can be addressed later. But these scooters can be limited to the same speed limits most of the areas we're talking about. Campus, 20 miles an hour. City park, not that fast. Downtown, 20 miles an hour. The company would limit the speed to 20 miles an hour. They stay in the street, they have the same responsibilities as a regular automobile. And parks and trails, we're already having ordinance, no motorized vehicles on them. So, we wouldn't have to say prohibit them, it's already prohibited. One of the things as a medic that I kept running into was people getting hit on bicycles, not paying attention, riding the sidewalk, crossing the road without looking, getting hit, falling down, and cracking their skull because they weren't wearing a helmet. I believe you would have to require a helmet for people using these scooters. Since it's getting late, I'm going to shut up, unless you have questions.
Well, thanks a lot. All right, well, we're closed. Public comment period and come back to the Commission for further comment.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and give my thoughts on this. So, I'll be honest, I'm actually pretty conflicted about this. And I'll tell you, a lot of where some of my conflict comes in was, we were in DC not even three months ago. And, yeah, it was about three months ago. And there were, I remember looking over at one of the Smithsonian's and in front of the Smithsonian was the area where you park the scooters and around the area where you park the scooters were just, one scooter was laying down on the sidewalk, another one was up on like a little bit of the hill of the Smithsonian, another one was further down. It was just utter chaos. And I thought to myself, if the Smithsonian's can't figure out a way, there is literally like four security guards standing 20 feet away from me. If they can't figure out a way to make sure that people put these back where they're supposed to put them, how can we? The other things that kind of jumped out to me, I did a lot of reading about e-scooters this morning. I still think safety is a really big concern. I appreciate all the statistics that were given to us comparing these to bicycles and cars. I mean, I agree, but even on the MPO, we look at vehicle deaths almost every single year, at least every two years, and there are initiatives and we work very hard to reduce those things. I'm not going to flip over a pothole in a two-ton truck. to reduce those things. I'm not going to flip over a pothole in a two-ton truck. I might flip over a pothole in a 25-pound scooter. And that's what causes a lot of the injuries. When I was reading through some of the statistics, some of it was pulling out in front of vehicles, but a lot of them had to do with them hitting some kind of a bump that essentially flipped them over. So, I think there's legitimate safety concerns, especially when some of these cities have been, had these e-scooters in their communities for six months to a year at this point. And cities like Nashville, the mayor proposed a ban after a death and an onslaught of injuries, and the city commission, city council there is going to vote on it. So, I think there's some safety concerns. The other thing I just talked about with the placement, while, while I agree, like, geofencing is great and can work to continually charge somebody, I can almost promise you, there's a limit on the top of that. Like, they're not going to keep running up your bill to $1,000. And if I am an intoxicated college student leaving Aggieville, and I'm like, hmm, I could take an Uber for surgery pricing for $40, or I could take an electric scooter, I'm not going to be able to drop it off at its placement. I know the fine's going to be like $25. They're going to run it up. You're just going to dump it in a bush. I don't know exactly what their upper limit is, but I can promise you, it's not a never-ending scale that they run, because that's not PCI compliant. They can't do that. And I think the enforcement on this would be quite tough. I think it's interesting. I hadn't heard of that ticking up. But like I said, there, there has to be a limit on that, I almost guarantee. And then, also, I don't think any good tech company is going to give a city government the data about who the last person to ride that was, so that we could go back and find them. And if they do, that's a company that I don't want to give any of my data to or cooperate with, ever. So, those are kind of some of my general concerns. One last thing is, I often, at my work, use my lunch period, because we're cool at, at the place I work, and we can play Mario Kart over lunch. And I often use that lunch period to some of the other people that I hang around with to ask some of their opinions. And I brought up what they thought about e-scooters. And within a matter of probably five minutes, I got two separate stories that were, one time when I was leaving a bar, I tried this on an e-scooter. And, I mean, these are upstanding citizens that are not bad people whatsoever. But the, I just don't know how you begin to address some of those safety concerns. Also, the first and last mile, I thought was one of the big advantages of this, was it did potentially help some of those transportation gaps. But when I was looking at the research that said that this really helped in first and last mile transportation, a lot of those studies were older. If I'm required to put an e-scooter back into a certain place, it's probably going to be a similar place as we have public transit stops now, right? Like, it's very unlikely that I'm going to have an e-scooter stop exactly where I want to go, just like, it's very unlikely I'm going to have a bus stop exactly where I want to go. So, I'm not sure actually if we require a placement in a certain area actually addresses that first and last mile. Last argument, the, I've heard a lot of people talk about the environmental impacts of this. Again, when I was reading through the studies that praise some of the environmental impacts of e-scooters, all of them were relatively older. And things, even in the research that we got, that they didn't seem to address were two things. One, there are employees that are driving around their vehicles at night, trying to find where these e-scooters are at. So, even though maybe someone's not driving a vehicle to where they were going in that e-scooter, there's someone's driving a vehicle, trying to find where that e-scooter was ditched, or to the charging area to bring it back home to charge. The other thing that I found was, there are reports that the life of many of these e-scooters is not very long. Between vandalism and just the abuse that the scooters get, somewhere around like, three months. And the lithium batteries that they use are quite a precious mineral. And so, I think it's yet to be determined if these actually have positive environmental impacts. With that being said, even though I gave all of these negatives, part of why a lot of these are negatives is because they're so new, and we haven't done a lot with them. So, I would be supportive of creating an ordinance similar to Wichita's, but I would suggest that we require helmet use. And quite frankly, I think if we require helmet use, then private companies here won't have market penetration, because I don't know anybody who goes to Aggieville with a helmet. I don't know anybody, like, that rides ATA and then says, "For the last mile of my trip, I'm going to carry a helmet." So, I think by us requiring helmets, we kind of limit the market for scooters personally. But I would be, I would want us to develop an ordinance similar to Wichita that requires helmets. And then I would be supportive of a pilot program with the one company, to see if maybe any of these outcomes are a little bit different. But I just think that, I just think that there's a lot of, there's conflicting information both ways. And it's kind of like, you don't know what you don't know. But I also don't, I don't necessarily think that this is the rose petal situation that the Boston Globe said it should be. So, I won't be throwing down any rose petals anytime soon, but I'd be supportive with moving forward with the regulation and starting a pilot program.
Well, I appreciate everybody that came and spoke up tonight. It's often the issues that I, I told Ron, I said, "E-scooters. That's where everybody's going to show up." And sure enough, there you are. So, thank you. I think because we discussed, this is still just a very, it's in its infancy stages. It's a trend that's just come onto the market. And last year, when we had that discussion, it was still, you know, people were still feeling it out. There was a strong opposition from students. And I think it's evolving. I would like to see ITGA, our group, get together and work through the details of it. I'm not in a mad rush to do it, because I would like to do it right. I would like to look at it as a temporary ordinance and a pilot program. I like the idea of having maybe two or three vendors, so we don't think that one vendor represents all vendors, because all of them might be doing it differently. Maybe that's an option, to look at two or three vendors and see which one works, and see where we have to tweak it. And when we do something like that, that means we have to be very responsible on making sure we're tracking everything. And then we have a dedicated person, or students, or somebody, to see if they're, if the ordinance are good, or if the fines are decent, or if they're applicable. What is geofencing? Is it working? Is it shutting off at 8:00 PM and nobody can ride it after 8:00 PM? How are those boundaries working out? All we have right now is on other people's work. And what I know is, when we do a three-hour meeting, you only see maybe a few paragraphs in a newspaper. So, I'm sure there's a lot more reading that happened in all of those studies that were done, that we don't have the documents for. So, I want to know how, how well geofencing does work. And that has to come with how we're doing it. As far as, I think bars are a great issue that Commissioner McKee brought up. And if geofencing works, we can set off a time limit. You can't use it after 8:00 PM, let's say, or 6:00 PM, or whatever time limit we want to put to that. I am concerned about the driver's license needed. There are a lot of populations right now that don't have a driver's license for a variety of reasons. And they may be the ones that also don't have a car, because they don't have a driver's license, and might be using Atabus or might be using a bicycle. If this is something they want to use, I want to see how we can work with vendors on that particular issue. If we are truly looking at equity, this might be one of those things that, a mode of transportation that can be used. But the driver's license, I want to make sure addresses that. Gender was brought up. I, I'm not sure it is gender. If it's respond, let's say, it's, it's good for both genders. I'm not sure of that. And I would like to see how that goes, if, which, which gender's using it more, or why, and do a little study about how they actually react to using it, or why they don't use it. A lot of females, there's a lot of things we don't use because of, you know, sexual violence that might happen, things that we are not aware of. It's very different when you're in a car, as opposed to a bicycle or a scooter of some kind. So, I want to make sure we collect the correct kind of data and look into that a little bit deeper. We need to work closely with our businesses that are also at the table, as well as PD, and not only RCPD, but K-State PD, and see how this works out with them. And I see this mostly as a recreational thing. I don't see people shopping always with a backpack. Maybe students might have a backpack, but I don't see people going, you know, downtown and everything, shopping. They might go there and have dinner, or they might be riding around for fun. That's how I've seen it in most of the other cities. If you're a tourist, you know, this seems like a fun way to go from one place to another, but it's not an actual mode of transportation that you would use every day, unless you're on campus. I don't know if the, the one that we saw there has a mirror to it. We talked about having a helmet, and you can't hear things. You know, bicycles have, some of them have mirrors. I don't know if it'd be helpful to have mirrors, or if they're, if they're used at all. But I can see a person that might be weaving around, because they're trying to get over past a car, and might not hear a car coming behind them. And it might be on the responsibility of the car to see which direction they're going. But those are some things ITGA and the group can work through. I am in favor of looking at options and getting an ordinance in place, and getting a pilot program going. But I really think we need to keep track of it carefully, to make sure if we do go in a permanent direction to this, we have actual data, what's happening in the city of Manhattan.
I'd like to be sure that we, our uniform and our police or our enforcement between the K-State campus and the community. So, that piece may need some special tweaking. But I agree that we need to get together and work on this in a serious way. I, too, would support speed limits. I, Lynn spoke earlier about one model or one company that could go up to 54 miles an hour, I think. That's not what we're talking about here. And 15 miles an hour seems like about the right speed. And I'm not one of those experts, so I appreciate the need for, Brandon, I don't know if, yep, you're still here. I appreciate the, your interest in having some experts, because we are very much, as Commissioners, lay people with regard to this issue. But we are concerned, and we are trying to look after the safety of the residents here. I think a helmet is important, but when I stop and think about it, you know, the state doesn't even require a helmet for a motorcycle. At least, I don't think so. And so, there's this contradiction here of, but it makes sense. So, I wouldn't object to requiring it, because I think there will be kids and younger people than, than use, drive motorcycles. When I think about dumping, I think about Triangle Park in Aggieville. And as a, I don't know how you geofence that, or if we even want to, but we need to find a way, because, you know, we talked about the companies coming in and dumping 200 of the e-scooters in some communities. I can see that there's a collection point in Aggieville for, Andy, I suppose downtown, but certain points, City Park, for example. And I know that we already have, we don't require the Green Apple Bikes to be put into a rack, and, which begs the question for me about any cost to the city. And I don't want to pay for, the city paying for some of these, what, unforeseen consequences. So, whether that's a, an e-scooter rack, I don't want to pay for that. The company, or, you know, but, but just, so you have to find a way to encourage people to do the right thing, and put the, the e-scooter in an appropriate place besides the bush, or the middle of Triangle, or 20 of them in Triangle Park. The good thing is that, the best I know, the companies come every night and pick them up. So, they disappear. But, anyway, I'm just really want us to look and see if they're, what the consequences are for costing the city in a pilot, whether we can make a little bit of money each time in order to pay for something. But, but I don't want the city to be strapped with the cost. I think that that's enough, just to give it some shape. I'm willing, we've always been willing, I think, to talk about this and try to figure out how we could make it work. We haven't shut it down, shut down, we have, we've never said no. But we're just looking for the right combination of what it'll take to make it safe for our citizens, and even our drivers. You know, if we say, "You can only ride on the street," then the sidewalk is off limits. That puts them out with cars. And whether that's the right thing to do. So, there, we have to make some value judgments here, too, that are going to be, it could be major consequential. I hope we make the right decisions.
I just have one quick question. Under, under state, could we require things like motorcycles to wear helmets in the city of Manhattan? And if no, how is e-scooters different than transportation modes like that?
Well, this, sorry. In the, the state, in the Senate bill that adopted e-scooters, they specifically authorized the city in the Senate bill to adopt stricter regulations or, and author, gave the city the ability to ban e-scooters. So, that's why we have so much more flexibility here than we do in some other areas of the Traffic Act. We can amend the Traffic Act in some ways, but we're, we're more limited unless the state gives us the specific authority, which they did here.
Okay. So, that's, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to be 100% sure. So, that's my general answer about helmets, is I would still want to require helmets. And if you want to take one of these bad boys on I-70 and take off your helmet, you can do that. But I think in the city of Manhattan, it's something that we should require.
Yeah, I'll just try to go down the questions here that staff ask, you know, should we allow e-scooters? Yeah, I think we should investigate that. But, but again, I want to emphasize that there's two ways to look at this. There's giving a franchise to a vendor, where they're going to have a whole lot more control on what happens, to include maybe requiring somebody to have a driver's license, because they're running a business. And, and that's one way to look at it. But then, as I look on the internet, there's a bunch of these things for sale out there, with different speeds and capabilities and seats, and one even has four wheels. And our definition, you know, that the Senate passed, has two or more wheels. So, I think that's got to be looked at real hard, because some of those are the ones, you know, some of them look like little mini motorcycles that'll go 54 miles an hour. And so, private citizens could buy those, and the regulation will, would be the same for them as the vendors. But the vendor, with whatever you do with the franchise rules on it, you could have all kinds of rules on where they park, and how fast they can go, and dead zones and all that. But, you know, so that, that's got to be part of the discussion. Don't lose sight of the fact that somebody can go buy one. And, and should we treat it the same as bicycles? I'd like to say that, but I, but I think, no, not in all cases, because of the speed. And so, you have to take a hard look at that. And, and I agree with one of the speakers. I don't hear real well out of one ear. And I hate when things come up behind me, even if it's runners or bicycles, and I'm out on our trails. So, I've got to look at some solution for that. And, and I like the idea of having, you know, the dismount zones apply to bicycles and scooters, and maybe that's the answer. Just certain places, you have the dismount zones, and then it becomes an enforcement issue. So, so that gets down to sidewalks, streets, or both. You know, I think there has to be a combination of that. Because there could be some confusion also, like Annenberg Park, we've got this giant sidewalk there. It's designed for bicycles and people. And that's a great place for a scooter. Maybe some other places aren't. I think the speed limit, the maximum speed limit, needs to be addressed, so that people don't go buy these high-tech things. I do think it's crazy, we don't require helmets for motorcycles, having ridden one for years and always wore a helmet. So, I think we should just make it mandatory. The helmet's got to be there, because if somebody falls off of one of those, especially if they hit one of our potholes that grows out here, they're going to need that helmet. And I think parking, you've got to look at, you know, we've invested in bike racks. So, so again, I'm thinking, again, if I, if I buy a personal scooter, where can I park it? Where the bike racks are, I would assume. If we need special scooter racks, because we hire a vendor, and I agree with Commissioner Morris, they should pay for it. That's got to be part of what we negotiate. And then again, parks and trails, again, I think they're probably appropriate in some places, you know, on the trails. And then some of the commercial scooters you can buy for personal use, got fat tires and all that, and they'll work. But that does sort of conflict with our regulation that says no motorized, you know, vehicles on linear trail. But, you know, I can get my tandem bike with my wife going faster than 20 miles an hour on linear trails. So, but we got to look at what the answer is there. But maybe, maybe it's got to be both, from, from that standpoint.
Yeah. Just a couple of thoughts. I think we're, we're right to be concerned about safety here. A lot of discussion on that. This, as I'm thinking about this, a little bit reminiscent of 1908, when there were ordinances to keep the new-fangled automobiles from scurrying the horses. And then in 1910, when Henry Ford would take various people with him, like Thomas Edison, on these trips to demonstrate the efficacy of a motorized vehicle. on these trips to demonstrate the efficacy of a motorized vehicle.
My research didn't go back that far.
So, you know, we had this similar thing happen with the introduction of UAVs. And the government was somewhat slow to react, but I, you know, we're getting this under control. Someday, we'll all be riding around, maybe not me, but Jared, maybe you will, on hoverboards, for goodness sakes. So these various forms of transportation are continuing to evolve. And so I think the most important thing we can do is get an ordinance together, so that we can regulate what comes in. And then I like the task force idea, particularly with some of the people who are experts, some of the people who have special circumstances at Kansas State University, and so on. So I think you guys could do that pretty well. But I'd just say also, that when you put an ordinance together, it has to be simple enough so that somebody knows the rules. You know, when you look at the Kansas State Driver's License Test, that's got a lot of piece parts that I'd argue a lot of people don't understand. So you have to make this so that a user can get on there with some assurance that he's not breaking the law all the time. So you need something else from us? What is it you need?
I just want to kind of confirm that you're giving city administration direction to go forth with adopting an ordinance that'll address some of the issues that you spoke about from a usage standpoint. And then we can address the broader company perspective when it comes to working with an e-scooter company, and the issues or concerns, safety concerns that come with that. That way, when we adopt the STO in the fall, we can provide regulations, and it'll basically be regulations for the private citizen that uses an e-scooter. And then we adopt further regulations when it comes time to work with an e-scooter company.
Yeah, I think you've got that.
Okay.
All right.
I want to be sure that you involve the partners, the police and K-State, and if you're going to take the lead and not have the town gown group, then, you know, I don't want any surprises at the end type thing.
Yep, of course.
All right, if there's no further business, we stand adjourned. Thanks very much. Give me a break.
Get that special fan out tomorrow that holds ice cream.